Patricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
Irene Hollerback, Aquia District.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths-Widewater District.
Susan Randall, George Washington.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood District.
So there are Ms. Young, would you like to?
Ms. Young is also here.
I believe Dr. Chase is on her way. So right now, we don't have anybody that is calling in if we need to change that. We will do so in case that comes up. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or modifications to the one agenda item that we have? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, is this session being recorded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, all right. So our first and only item, good morning, is to discuss the school board's funding request. I thought we would start first, as many of us know, there were some announcements yesterday by the governor, since we are all here together. I thought I would turn that over to Dr. Kizner to just give some words on that, not just any budget impact, but even just an overview, and then secondarily, if you think there's any budget impact or recommendations changes.
Okay, well, good morning. It's great to see everyone. Everyone seems relaxed and happy Saturday. If there was a group I want to hang out with, it would be this group, so I'm excited. So just, and Chris is going to go into it, but if you read either yesterday's or today's Richmond Times-Dispatch, there's probably going to be some very positive news as it relates to state revenue to support public education. As you know, we're still operating under the governor's proposal, but was the School Superintendent's Association lobbyist has been keeping us informed almost daily about state revenue projections, which really look at the month of January and February. So we won't really know anything hard until February is completed, but in a couple of weeks, we should get some early projections from the Secretary of Finance for the state. But the only thing I would share with you, what I could almost guarantee you, we're going to get more than what the governor is proposing. And again, if you read Richmond's paper, Richmond Times-Dispatch, you'll get a better sense of what I'm speaking about. So I just remind you that we always operate like this, every school system does. We build a budget around the governor's proposal, and then a general assembly amends it. In most cases, they actually amend it to the positive. So it does appear that that's actually going to happen. So anyway, Chris is now just going to go over a brief summary of my presentation, and then maybe add something more, and then, of course, then we'll follow the process that you guys want to.
Dr. Kizner, is there anything you want to say about the governor's announcement about school possibly being extended or anything like that?
Yeah, so let me touch upon-
If he could hit that first, and then I appreciate-
Yeah, okay, so, you know, the governor spoke to superintendent at 8:30 in the morning, and I was very tempted to not follow the rules. I'm known to do that once in a while, but we had to kind of promise that we were going to embargo the information to 11 o'clock to his press conference. My takeaway was that we really learned nothing new, to be truthful with you. Our school system, what the governor's saying is, "I want by March 15th, people to start bringing back children." Well, we've been bringing back children, you know, since, really, since the beginning, but in October, we brought, you know, all the elementary and CTE kids, and then you know, you saw on the sign when you pulled in, next week, we bring it back six through nine, and then the following week, we bring back 10 through 12. So we're already not only met what he hopes, but we've exceeded it. There's still many, many school systems. Matter of fact, I will say this, besides Chesapeake Public Schools, we are the second largest school system that, starting next week, that will have middle and high school kids. You know, we're in the top 10 of large school system. Chesapeake is larger than us, but if you look at Fairfax, Loudon, Prince William, and RICO, Virginia Beach, Chesterfield, none of them, they're just bringing back their elementary children, okay, and over the next couple of weeks. The other thing that he spoke about, which is not a bad thing, if it's extra money for us, because we're going to have multiple programs and approaches to help with learning loss. So the other thing he spoke about was, he's going to encourage or incentivize school systems to have a summer program, not mandated, and he didn't speak specifically how we would get reimbursed for that, but he did indicate that he's working with the general assembly to put more money towards summer learning. So if there's something we were planning to do, or maybe we could expand something we were thinking about doing, then we'll, then we'll seek it. But again, I know my kids, you know, I'll just say what they said, "Oh, Dad, I got to work this summer." I said, "Yeah, well, yeah, you know, maybe." But now, after the press conference, they felt better. I said, "Well, you still may have to work. If your school system says you're going to work, you got to work." And anyway, but it's not mandated, okay? So school systems would have the option, if they want to do the summer programming. It's very, we should get any day now, guidance from the state, what that will look like to apply for the summer programming, and what criteria you have to meet to receive the summer programming dollars. But that was the extent, at least as it relates to school. So Stafford is way, way beyond what he hopes school systems will do by March 15th. He really did not say that school systems must have children. He put a marker down, that's the word he kept saying, and there are, just, believe it or not, I didn't realize this many, there's still about 33 out of 133 school systems that are all virtual. So, you know, so he's really, I think, in many ways, speaking to those school systems. Anyway, that's, that's what we all learned on Friday.
I appreciate that. It just seemed like that was something very timely for us just to understand, and if there's any impact there. But then, Mr. Fulmer, I think you will be taking it away.
All right, good morning, everyone. So you should have three documents specifically from me excluding the budget book. One is going to look like the superintendent's presentation, but it's going to have today's date on it, and that's what I'm going to go through now. It's actually, basically, the summary from Dr. Kizner's presentation of what the actual ending result was for the budget, and I added some additional information for us to discuss on the service scale enhancements at the end, and so we'll go through that. I also provided you what you should be used to seeing for the last few years, is just a budget summary showing the big-ticket increases and decreases, and it lists the positions, and we can go through that as we move along as well. And then lastly, you would have received in the stack just a listing of positions, and I just want to stress, it's kind of like a description of each position that's new in the budget. When I say new, we don't have teachers or counselors listed there, because you already know what those are, you know what those positions do. Positions we targeted on here are maybe new ones or ones that you're not as familiar with. I'll say, like, the work-based learning coordinator is one of the ones we put on there, and so that's a somewhat new position. We have some staff at a very limited capacity to do that now, but with some requirements coming down from the state, we need to expand upon that. So those are the types of positions listed there, and we can go through those, or you can review those before our next budget work session. So I'm going to start by just, as Dr. Kizner said, I'm going to kind of recap the budget and go over the big key points. So first of all, overall, and the revenue assumptions in Dr. Kizner's budget, it's based on a state ADM projection of 29,425, and I should use it probably loosely, the word "based on." Enrollment projected to be over 29,700, but the ADM projected by the state is about 29,425. However, there's no lost funding from the state based on original projections, so we're actually being funded on over 30,000 children for next year, which is where we have the $7.5 million increase, along with some other funding increases. The bulk of that $7.5 million from the state is no lost funding, and as Dr. Kizner mentioned, you know, that number is still in flux. We'll get more information in the coming weeks about how that will change. The budget does assume a county-local transfer increase of $9 million. Federal revenue is flat. The bulk of federal revenue in our operating fund is Impact Aid. Fortunately for, you know, if y'all are aware, we normally send out those green forms, they go home to every student, and we have to get them to return. The government did allow us this year just to use last year's numbers, and so we were, we were getting ready to try to convert everything, we actually did, to electronic, and then when we heard from the federal government that we could actually use last year's number, that would be more favorable to us, so we're able to hold our federal revenue level. And then our other miscellaneous revenue is about an increase of about $400,000, and some of that is offset by expenditures related to increase in our dual enrollment AP/IB classes and the fees that students pay us, and then we turn around and pay for those tests and So high level, total expenditure is $340 million. There was an increase of 16.9, which was 5.25%. There's total new positions of 56 FTEs, and we'll get into that. Only 54 of those are funded with operating funds. We still wanted to highlight those other two positions. Those will be funded out of our new federal stimulus money, and those are the online learning coordinators. So just rehashing, I don't want to go over each one of these, because we're going to end up going over them as we go through the presentation, but high level, over $10 million put into the teacher scale, that includes the 5% across the board, and some adjustments to the teacher scale, minimum 5% for service employees, and then also some money to help reduce or to relieve some of the compression and get closer to the midpoint. Overall, we net about a $950,000 increase in our non-compensation lines. I'll also point out that a lot of what we saw in increases this year for COVID and carriers that actually go into next year, like air filters, we increased our frequency of replacing air filters, we have air filters now for the air purifiers. We're able to use some of that federal stimulus money for next year as well, because they extended it and gave us additional funds. So at first, actually, in tier one, before we knew about this federal stimulus money, we had a lot of those increases built into the operating budget, because we had to cover them. For instance, the air filters alone are about a $500,000 a year investment to keep our air purifiers and the increased air filter changes, so we're able to use federal stimulus money for that. Also, we can, we'll talk a little bit more, and Patrick's here to talk more about the expanded tuition assistance and education loan support. I won't go through each one of these, just really high level. Total increase from tier one before we made reductions to get to the superintendent's budget was 36.1, and as I mentioned already, we got back to a $16.9 million increase. These are the positions, and once, this is another slide pulled straight from Dr. Kizner's presentation, and assuming that we'll discuss those in more detail, I'm going to jump past this right now, and then we can come back to it, unless there's any questions yet.
Chris, why don't you finish the presentation, then we'll break it up.
Sure. So just recapping the investments in the staff education, if you feel it's appropriate to discuss this now while we're covering it, welcome Patrick to come up and chat about this, or we can talk about the service scale and then come back.
What's going to happen?
Right, keep going, and then we'll come back. All right. Just recapping the FY '22 teacher salaries, as I said, a minimum increase of 5%, the average is 7.2, and on the high end, it's 9.4. I believe that was around step, between 15 and 18 is where we saw some of the largest This is recapping that teacher scale from the entry point up to the top of the scale with five-year increments and comparing it to Prince William, Fairfax, and Spotsylvania. I'm going to target on step 15, because that is where we have the biggest, what we'll call the sag, the lag behind our competitive school divisions. So right now, this is the base teacher scale. Our current scale is just over 52,000. Proposing for next year to be 56,000, and then over the three-year plan, which was presented to the school board back in November and December, would be 64,000. You'll see that it does create a bigger gap between Spotsylvania, and we do start to close the gap between Prince William and Fairfax around the, between the two of them averaging about 75,000. Pointing out, the top of our scale right now is at 39 years currently, looking to get that down to 33 over the three years. Fairfax, in comparison, actually gets to the top of the scale, which is 92,000, so higher than our current top of the scale, and they get to the top of their scale at 25 years on the base teacher scale. And even Spotsylvania, although they go up to 40 and 41 years, they do have a higher top of the scale as well, going all the way up to 98,000. Prince William will get to 32 years, which is kind of the same area that we're targeting at the end of this, which would be 33s at the top, so they get to 126,000 on the base teacher scale at 32 years. So we're definitely want to spend some time talking about the service scale enhancements. That's been a target for the last few years for the school board and Dr. Kizner. Everybody will see the minimum 5%, and then additionally, we have the $1.4 million contributed to trying to address compression and give credit for years of experience to the service scale. So the first thing we did is we took our scales, we took the minimum and increased it by 1.5%. That's already kind of built into that 5%, so just increasing the minimum doesn't actually provide an increase, but it does impact the market adjustment that individuals will be receiving, and I'll explain why. So you'll see, I said years 1 through 10, 1.5%, and what that means is, for every year of experience, an employee from, from 1 to 10 will be 1.5% above the minimum. So if I have 10 years of experience, we set a new floor for them to say, you should at least be 15% above the minimum for your pay grade. And then subsequently, for every year after that, 11-plus right now, we're giving an additional 1%. Ideally, at the end of this, this is not getting us all the way up to the midpoint, targeting more of probably 2% per year, Patrick, does that sound? For, for, for one, maybe up to 2 and 1/2, but, but this is what we could afford this year. It still has a, has a great impact for our staff, and I'm going to show you a few examples of kind of some of our two bigger employee groups. So this is a similar chart that I've shown you in the past, a little bit different colors. I was trying to get it more of a heat map to where we could really show where our, our staff are. So the yellow is, is our current hourly rate of our employees by years of experience. So that's our current rate, and, and what you'll see is it's, it's very flat, which means everybody from 0 to 15 years of experience virtually makes the same per hour, and these are, sorry, I shouldn't mention these, these are our classroom paraprofessionals, so our general paraprofessionals. Our target is, as you can see, is our green, and that's actually what we're proposing in this FY '22 budget. So it's zoomed in kind of close to get the full impact. So you'll see that immediately, it goes on the, from the yellow to the green, that, that immediate jump is that 5% that we're applying, and then we have the $1.4 million invested across all of our service scale to give that years of credit experience. And what that does is, since it's based on years of experience, you'll see that it's a kind of linear line from the increasing based on years of experience. This is just a different employee group. These are some of our admin support, admin assistants, very similar, and I should mention this, it's a heat map, so the bigger the circle means there's more employees there, because each one of these dots is supposed to represent an employee, but we have a lot of them bunched together. So the thicker the circle means there's more employees at that level. So once again, you'll see that we, we start to move from that flat pay across from, even in these instances, from 0 up to over 20 years of experience, and we start to give credit for each of those years of experience. So that was what I had prepared, and I know I went through that quickly, so I guess, first, if you want to talk about the service scale or any questions about how that's implemented.
Let's, because we know one of the biggest parts of this budget is going to be the personnel and this piece, let's just go back to the licensed staff one. I know that the board has reviewed it several times and has seen that. If you can go back, Chris, maybe to the licensed staff one, are there any questions? I know we have talked about this, but I don't want to give it short shrift if, if there's any additional questions about the proposed, and when we call it the teacher scale, is it only teachers or are there others?
No, yeah, and I, and I'm, I do a poor job at that sometimes, so it's licensed staff. So there are counselors, psychologists, there's, whoever's on our licensed scale.
Does that, we, we put the nurses on their own scale. Would the nurses track with this? Would that scale track with this as well?
Yeah, so the nurses that, because we have different levels of nurses, but the nurses that are on our teacher scale are tracking would see those same increases, yes. And I, I do want to stress that this approach, we're going to, we need to kind of annually look at our teacher scale and reassess, and so this is our, our first stab at trying to make up those market differences. We already know this year that other school divisions are, are doing 4%,, 5%,, 6% increases, so we're going to have to take another look at the end of this year and, and maybe reevaluate and adjust our three-year plan.
All right, are there any other questions about the licensed one? Yes, Dr. Chase?
So just another question. So before I got on the board, the board had moved away from talking about teacher scales and steps and rather just years of experience. Are we going back to having actual steps and step increases, or are we still just doing years of experience and trying to cap the years of experience at 33?
Yeah, so there are a lot of similarities. When you look at a scale, you don't even really know if it's a years-of-experience scale or a step scale, and so you can use those terms, you can interchangeably. So what we're proposing in this one is that we're actually moving them up a step to stay on the step based on their years of experience.
And people who've been on the board longer than me would have to, to say whether this is the case or not. My understanding is we were trying to move away from using that terminology, because there were so many years where we could not give people the step, and people would get very upset, because they felt like they were entitled to that step, and then a year or two later, they were like, "Why, why don't I have this step?" And so I just, it's a semantic thing, I just don't know what we're, did the board make a decision that I missed, or are we doing something different, or, and, and is that something we want to propose doing? I just, just clarification.
Yeah, let me, I know at one of, I think, Fab meetings, or maybe it was a total board meeting, this was discussed, and again, just because I've been doing this for 22 years, there's really no difference. It's all how you package it. But what I would ask you to say, look at is, what were the results of the decision that was made many years ago? And I would suggest to you, it wasn't very positive, okay? And, and so that's one thing we need to look at, but Prince William is a good example. So yet, last year, they did not give raises, but they did give step increases. And remember, most of our staff did not get any raise. We did do a step, we did do some adjustment for certain teachers, but I would just maybe offer you, we'll use the number 10 million just to make it easy, 10 million of a $340 million budget. I absolutely believe that we could look for every reason why we can't do something, but we need to look for every reason why we can do it, and we need to commit to this if we're really serious about making our salaries attractive for our current people and, and also to get people to look at Stafford. So I feel like we should make an obligation, the school board should make an obligation, that as we, as you work an additional year, you get an additional increase in your salary. So, you know, that's the only thing I would offer, is regardless of what we package it, people are just as discouraged when they look at their neighboring school systems and see what they're getting paid. So I, I don't think most people really would know what, how we, how we word it. All they know is, what am I getting paid compared to my colleagues in other school systems? And we showed you the data, people are going north, they're not going south. And the other thing I would just mention, I'll actually email to you, I'll actually email to you in a few minutes. I thought I made copies, but I didn't. When we looked at the school systems that were compared with back in 17, whatever year we did it, and again, I'm, I'm never going to second-guess another superintendent, because there's only 133 of us out of 100,000 educators, so it's, we have a, we have a blood pack that we don't, we don't, we don't criticize each other, at least publicly. So, but when we looked at some of those school systems, it's really hard for me to understand why they were selected. You know, like, why did we select Albemarle? Why did we select Chesterfield? Why did we select Chesapeake? Our folks are not going there, and what happened was, their salaries are lower than us, absolutely, they're lower than us. So when we looked at the average, our staff ended up getting a depressed salary, but when we looked at school systems north of us, where our folks are going, they're higher than us. So we are in many ways saying, throw, well, I don't want to use the word "throw out," let's set aside the decision made a couple of years ago, and you guys actually moved in this direction last year or two years ago, and look at our competitors. And our competitors right now are Spotsy, not to a great degree, you saw that, but Prince William and Fairfax. And that's, and it's not, we only say that because that's what the data is showing.
Ms. Healy, you want to comment?
I appreciate what you're, you're saying, Dr. Kizner, and I think a goal, you know, to, to move forward is very good to have, but we have to be very cautious about setting an expectation in our staff that this will be a given, you know, every year, because we don't have the funding mechanism ourselves, we're dependent on the state and the federal and the local government, that we, there's no way we can guarantee, you know, a certain increase in, in salaries. And I've been told ever since I've been on the board that no board can commit a future board. So I think when we, you know, package this, it needs to be that this is, this is a goal or this is a plan of, of the current board, but that it is not anything that people can essentially take to the bank, because people would come up to the board and they said, "You promised me, you know, when, when I was hired, you know, you promised me I would get these increases every year, and the contracts are for a single year." So I applaud the, 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 the goal and that it's going to be there, but I don't want these employees, whether they're current or future employees, to have this expectation that may possibly not be realized, because the funding just isn't there. And, and this is, this is not just one time, you know, that I've seen that people come, it's, it's more than once, and it's not really all the board's control, you know, it's what's available and what our requirements are. You know, we can see, you know, these new positions that we need, we, we have to have these positions. So sometimes we have a choice, do we add positions, or do we put the money into salaries? Do we increase class sizes? There, there, there are never any attractive choices when you have a limited sum of money that has to be spread out. So that's, you know, I would, I would just caution having a expectation that this is a given, you know, for the next three years.
I, I do appreciate, you are right, boards only adopt one year budgets at a time. However, I do remind us, the county did this for the sheriff's department, okay? They re-completely did their salary scales over, they went to market comparisons of where the sheriffs are going and where future sheriffs could come to Stafford. So we actually have a model in our community that was implemented last year, and the sheriffs, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting by any means they made a bad decision, I actually think they made the right decision, and what they did was increase their salaries, many of them by double-digit, okay? So they committed, and I believe, honestly, you could commit. Now, the step increase, if we took out the, the minimum salary increase, the step increase is not a huge amount of money when you look at a $340 million budget. Again, every year since I've been here, and I'm sure every year prior, you have goals about attracting and retaining staff, and how are we going to accomplish that if we don't commit to providing our staff the salary which I, and I think all of you feel the same way, they deserve? We have a loyal workforce, because again, I, it is competitive. I mean, again, right now, you could go under the Prince William County website, they're opening up a high school and middle school one right north of us, less than 20 minutes to get there, and, and again, I don't need to show you the numbers again. It, it doesn't, it's not, especially where we are here in, in North Stafford, it's not hard to drive over there and make a significant more amount of money. So you are right, we cannot commit another board, they only get one-year contracts, but I would like to believe that we're giving you a pathway, and what Chris said is also important. We're not, well, we know Spotsy, at least what the superintendent proposed was a 6% raise. I'm- I'm hearing Prince William is going to be about a 5% raise, and, you know, others will announce soon. So we're actually giving you numbers that are current compared to our projected next year, or our proposed next year. So, you know, I acknowledge you can only do one year, but I'm trying to at least give you a pathway forward to get us to a better place. And it's not going to happen overnight, as Chris already indicated, it may take us more than three years. Most, it's definitely going to take us more than three years. But at least we have a trajectory to make us more competitive. And the power, the service employees, I mean, since I got here, we were trying to get people to the minimum. And we didn't accomplish that. Now we got people to the minimum, now we're trying to get them to the midpoint. So I do think people get discouraged the way we've been doing it the last few years. I mean, every time I have a superintendent advisory committee, they say, when are we going to get to the minimum? And that's, that to me is more depressing than, than anything else, like, we're trying to get you to the minimum. So you committed to a study a couple of years ago, and, and I would just again, think that you guys and future school boards, if they're really committed to that school board goal, could do it. And that, and so I cut a lot of positions that were needed, to go to Ms. Healy's point, to commit to this. I mean, you're right, you had to sacrifice, but the sacrifice I felt for the next year for sure was put more money in salaries and less money in new positions.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Since I was part of the, the board that initiated that, the change away from the, from that step scale, the reason that we did it was because we weren't moving at all. We needed some type of launchpad, and that was the mechanism that we used to convince the board of supervisors that we can do incremental raises to try to get this thing moving. Because as Trish said, we were just not giving any step increases, we weren't doing anything. So in defense of that particular board at that particular time, that was the right thing to do. And now this seems to be going in a different direction, which is fine, whatever's going to make us move forward. But I just felt like I needed to say why we did it.
All right. Dr. Fulmer?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we did move everybody up a year of experience last year with the teacher salary, correct? Oh, sorry. So we, we did move everybody up a year of experience, and basically a step, year of experience, however you want to say it. It's going to be almost impossible to attract teachers if we say, we're going to hire you at this salary, and we're not going to guarantee you that every year of experience, you're not going to, your salary's not going to go up. It's going to be impossible. This seems like a reasonable plan. I would imagine that the sheriff's department has a similar years of experience or step increase every year for their salaries, correct?
This has some information. Can you, you were saying this sheriff's salary?
The sheriff's department has a similar, every year of experience, their salary goes up a certain percentage, it's already built in. So that if we're hiring people from other school districts, we have a basis for looking at their salary schedule.
Correct. So, so they did the same model for the sheriff's department for public safety, not just sheriffs, on the county side. And so we took kind of that template and went back and really said, same, doing market comparisons, the reason we've kind of fell behind is because all the other school divisions are still using a step scale system. And so that was kind of another launching pad of, hey, maybe we need to get back to a step scale system, because every year we don't do a step, we're falling a few percent behind these other school divisions. Prince William has done a step increase for the, I'm going to say, at least the last three or four years straight, and they're proposing one for next year. And so by not doing a step increase and just shifting our scale down with our employees, we're basically losing a whole step. Hard to explain, but we're, it's more than just a couple of percent that we're losing to them when you compare our scales.
And we did move everybody up one step.
So last year, yeah, we adjusted the scale, but we moved everybody up, which was really, at most was about two and a half, three percent for some of our teachers, but really was, on average, was less than one and a half percent for our teachers.
And the goal with this is to make us competitive, because we're competing for a smaller, a shrinking pool of licensed professionals.
Correct.
All right. Any other comments on, on this one? I think then, to Dr. Chase's point about making sure step and years of service, how are we really going to state this and just making it really clear? And not that we have to solve it here, but I think that's just something we do need to, to think about, how, how we bring it forward. One of the other options I do see is since, I think we were being kind in terms of saying that we had a large number of people we want to move to this scale, we could try and request that the board of supervisors fund our whole thing in one year, like they did. And then we just solve it. So we would solve Ms. Healy's comment too, if we could just get it all in one year. I do think it would be nice to have what that figure would be, Mr. Fulmer, not today.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And I can, I can tell you, it's roughly, to do it all in a single year, it's about $25 million.
Okay. I just would like to know what that figure is, so that we can, can say that, because then we, we get out of that, that issue. So like I said, just one of those points to put as one of maybe potentially as we present the budget, which we will in March as a potential talking point.
I can propose that on our actual teacher scale, when we produce that for the school board's actual approved budget, we can put a note at the bottom that clearly states that, you know, there's no guarantee that you're going to be, move up a step every year, or some sort of a statement in there about that that's going to be based on board action each year.
Sure. And we can talk that through. The other piece I think is also, if we put licensed staff, I do think we should maybe have a listing of who is covered by that.
That's a great idea.
And it may be in there, but, and I'm sorry, I haven't gotten through everything, but I think that's good for everybody to know whose service we're honoring.
That's a great point, we'll do that.
Okay, so that's compensation model, number one. Let's move to the service, I think it's called the service scale? That was the second one that I believe the board hasn't seen yet to the detail that we have seen the licensed staff. So I'm sure that you and, I don't know if it's Mr. Burnett, will be talking through that particular. So let's go to that part next. Oh, yes, Dr. Chase, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just, if, if we're moving to that, I just was curious how different this is from what was proposed last year.
So, very similar concept. The only, only difference is last year, all we could do was get everybody to the minimum. So the only people they got were adjusted, our paras minimum is about $14.34 an hour for our general classroom paras. So we had paras making $13.50, $14. If you were making $14.50, you received no adjustment last year. Because you were already above, you could have 10 years of experience making $14.50 an hour, and you would receive, receive no adjustment. You only received the adjustment if you were below the minimum. So, and that goes across all of our uniform scale, service scale employees. We just adjusted everybody up to that $14.34, so that we were at least had everybody on the scale that we wanted to get to. And now that next step is, we've got to start to give credit for all these years that we haven't properly adjusted them based on their experience and relieve some of that compression.
Yeah, I just had a sense of deja vu, and I just wanted to make sure that, that it pretty much is what I understood from last year.
Yep, exactly.
Great, thank you. Ms. Young, do you have one before Mr. Fulmer continues?
Good morning, everyone. So one of the questions I have is that when I was chair of the budget committee, or even prior to that, one of my requests was to get everyone to the mid-level, not just to the bottom of the scale. And so with this change, or just even moving from step to however we decide to do it, where does everybody, or where do all employees going to land? Like, I know here we have a teacher scale, like a three-year plan, do we have a three-year plan for everyone to get to that mid-level? And is there something that we could do to at least see that, so that we could at least have a plan to move towards that?
Yep, absolutely. So the plan would be to gradually get there over probably two or three years, depending on how much we can invest each year. So it would be, it's close to probably $4 million to get everybody, when I say everybody to the midpoint, it's based on years of experience. So if you're a brand-new person, you're not going to be at the midpoint, you'd be at the bottom of the scale, and then you would move up. But if you're at 15, 20 years of experience as a paraprofessional, then you should probably be at the midpoint. And so that's what we're targeting based on years of experience, is to say, for, if you've got 15 years of experience here, you should be near that midpoint. And that's where it's looking at about $4 million to do that across our service scale.
So is that something that we could show somewhere? Like when, especially like whoever presents, when the presentation time comes, that that could be shown and seen?
Yeah. And what we can, what Patrick and I can work on is showing that as like a, what that three-year plan kind of looks like. It's hard to show in, in the graph form, because we got so many different class of employees, and that's why I picked some of the biggest ones, so you can get the idea of what we're trying to accomplish. But we can definitely show, similar to how we did our teacher scale presentation, of what that three-year commitment would look like.
Yeah.
Are already at midpoint, very few. But we can, we can pull in and give you exact numbers.
Yeah, the only reason why I think that is so important, because this is, this is what we're fighting for, right?
Yep.
And we need to be able to show it effectively and, and get that point across to the board of supervisors, I think that's important.
Yep.
And then I have a second question, but I could wait for it, but it's, it's part of this, this development of a multi-year funding strategy, that, you know, we have one and two increase per people expenditures, and we're talking about this teachers and staff scale. I'm wondering if there's a way, and this is just me asking, I'm looking at different places, and I'm like, is there a way that we could show our three-year, multi-year funding strategy that includes teachers, staff, the perpudal expenditures? And I know there's two different things, but is there a way that we could show it to, to make the board presentation a little bit more effective? Because we're striving towards that.
Yeah. The teacher one, I think we may have, but the service one, I totally agree with you. We, we'll break it down by category and show you over three years, how many people will get to the midpoint. I think that's a great, a great question. The other thing about that goal, I think it needs a lot of deep conversations with the board of supervisors. This might be, again, something that you as a school board may want to consider as part of your three-on-three or joint discussions, because it's not just salaries, we're talking about capital expenses, you know, we're talking about the three-year list. We did approach it a little bit the other night. So I definitely encourage that conversation to continue, but I don't want it to be isolated just on salaries.
All right. Mr. Fulmer, why don't you throw up that slide again on the service, just so, if you can?
This is just a summary, but I feel like, unless you want to see the summary, this is our best presentation of, of the impact. And so, to, to Ms. Young and Dr. Kizner's question about how many are above midpoint, if you, well, you can even look and see at 15 years of experience, which is where we would like to see our midpoint, our midpoint is about 40% above our minimum. So for $14, you're, let's just say you're somewhere closer to the $18 mark, which for paras, if you, if you go across from your, from your 18, and then look who's actually above 18, we, looks like we have about three, three or four employees that are above that $18 mark for, at that midpoint. And they're at over 25, 27 years of experience, and those would have been employees that obviously have been here a long time, if they have 25, 27 years of experience as a pair, are most likely have been with us that entire time, and received step increases back when we used to provide step increases at the early part of their career.
Are there any questions about this?
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate all the effort you put into these graphs and charts. The board of supervisors has wanted us to be able to do more long-range planning, and this type of salary proposal actually accommodates that, correct?
Yep.
So we need $4 million, you said, just to bring all of our service sector employees up to the midpoint, is that correct?
Four, I don't know if you put it...
Four million?
Four million, yes, ma'am.
And so we have a proposal to do this over three years.
Yeah, so, so originally, we were, you know, obviously trying to do it in one year. State funding wasn't quite there, and so in tier one of superintendent's budget, we had it trying to go the full way and get everybody to that midpoint of what we actually desired after that three years. And so we trimmed it back as, as the tiers went along, and then finished with investing about $1.4 million, thinking that's about a third of the way there with some, with some tweaks along the way.
So that's where you got this number in the market adjustment?
Correct.
And then, so most of our compression seems to be at the base of the scale, less than 15 years?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where we make the bigger investment. Okay, thank you.
Of course, the board can always decide if they, if we, not to override, but to say, maybe we want to make additional investment. So I'm just saying, nothing is set in stone, so I think this is a good discussion, not, you know, but I think that we all realize that there is work to be done here, and our licensed staff are critical, but everybody in our school system is critical. And we're going to need a lot of support staff and a lot of our other, as we've had to change job descriptions, our maintenance worker, just all of those people, I, if that is something the board wants to consider, I guess I'll just throw it out as a sort of discussion item. Is there any other, either questions or comments in that area?
I just, one quick comment. Why school systems have a challenge to do a multi-year budget projections and different than counties, especially in Stafford? Because we get most of our money from the state, that, that can't be lost. And in the next few weeks, we're going to learn about new laws. And we already talked a lot about school councils, because that one is, you know, that one's been last few years. So sometimes our budget decisions, we're not going to know today, because General Assembly will get back a year from now and pass new laws. So that's where the counties or cities, they, they know their sale tax projections, they know their housing, real estate, property tax projections. It is somewhat, easier may not be the right term, but it's more predictable at the, at the appropriating body level than at the school level, because we're heavily dependent on what happens in Richmond, and this year will not be an exception. There are many bills that haven't yet been signed by the governor, but if it is signed, it is going to have some budgetary impact for us, that are not, that are not reflected in this budget proposal.
Can I get a point of clarity, though? You said, seemed to be suggesting that across the entire state, the majority of the budget comes from the state. Is that true, or is that just a Stafford thing? Or is it some percentage of the counties? Because it used to be that Stafford County provided more than 50% of the budget to the school system, and now it provides less.
Yeah, what, what the state trend is that it's, we watch these, the VSPA presentations, and Jim Regenwald, who is kind of a, a state, you know, forecaster and, and works with all the school divisions, and, or not with the school divisions, but reports on what's happening at the state general assembly and revenue forecast. Every year, we hear the same thing from him, which is, or, school divisions are becoming more reliant on state revenue. And so you see the trend of their percentage of their total budget, sorry, sorry, becoming more reliant on the local piece, less reliant on state revenue. And we have the opposite trend here, we're becoming more reliant on our state revenue than we are our local revenue. And I would say, most of them, so we're at about 57, 58% is state funding compared, and predominantly the rest of that is local funding. Where I believe that many of the other school divisions, you're going to see those percentages look a lot different.
Ms. Healy?
Mr. Fulmer, can you tell us why we had that change in the trend? Because I recall as Dr. Chase, that it used to be that the locality provided more than the state, and now the state's providing more than the locality. Is that because of funding formulas? Or, you know, I'm just, would like to know the basis for that, because I, I think that's something that's important, you know, as we are presenting our budget, you know, where it's, where it's coming from.
Yeah, so from, I don't want to speculate too much, but I can say at a high level, the state funding formulas haven't changed. the state funding formulas haven't changed very much. So the state tells us what we're going to get, we can't really, really tweak that much at all. So the only impact or really the correlation is, is that our, our state percentage, or sorry, our local percentage increases haven't kept up with our state funding increases, if that makes sense.
Would, would some of that maybe be growth that because we have had more students coming in, the state gives us more money for those students?
Correct, so we get additional, we get additional funding from the state as we add more, more students. It's just whether that, that local funding piece keeps up with that same increase in per people.
If you look at the PowerPoint presentation I did, there was a few years that the locality gave us less than 2%. They gave us 1.4%, 1.6%. And that, once that happens, it's very hard to catch up. So you, again, if you get a chance.
Yeah.
And then the last year, you know, a couple of years, the state did put more money into it, so every school system benefited. Last year's, two years ago is a good example. But there's no question, in Stafford, the trend is opposite when, what we heard at the, at the, at the conference back in January, the state finance conference, that localities are putting up more money to school budgets, but Stafford, it's opposite.
It, it might be good to be able to show the, not just what's happening in Stafford with this trend, but the fact that, that other places are not following that trend, if indeed, if that's the case.
If we could get like a state average, as well as maybe looking at the Northern Virginia schools where we are more competitive with, like what does Fairfax get, what does Prince William get, as a percentage of local versus state?
Sure.
And show that as a graph.
And I would remind the board, at least, again, I think it was the whole board, but it might have been the three-on-three, we did present to the, the board of supervisors the local required effort, not just the state. And again, every school system that we're showing, including Spotsylvania, our local required effort is lower than, than, than everyone else, Spotsy, Fairfax, Prince William. So it should not really surprise us. The data is all aligning with each other. And if we're going to change it, which I, which is one of your goals, then this, salaries are 80% of our budget, something to that effect. So that would be the big push for that to change.
Any other comments? I'll make one brief one. I remember several years ago, we looked into, and knowing that I didn't throw nothing out, I may even be able to find it, was looking at divisions and if they have funding agreements with their funding body, and Dr. Kizner and I have talked about this, I mean, we've begun to talk about it, are there certain percentages we get off the top? When we come with year-end funds, does the board of supervisors automatically say, look, you go to savings, 2% or under will automatically be re-appropriated to you without coming in and groveling and asking and telling everything that we're going to do? Also, is there a funding body that, hey, if, if you're doing well, county, does the school system get 50% of that new revenue, you know, as part of the budget? And then you discuss some of the other things. We sort of looked at, I know Prince William, I believe theirs is still in, in force, but it's just still an interesting concept that perhaps that time has come back based on some of the discussion we're having here, that why that happens is maybe because there is not something like that in place, just something to, to think about in the bigger picture, not probably to be solved as part of the budget process. But I do believe that budget planning and trying to possibly raise, perhaps my three-on-three colleagues, some thought about that, perhaps presenting this data with that and not just presenting it, but coming forward with, well, here are some maybe ways we could address it, just to maybe get that discussion started, so, just for future. So any comments concerning the service scale? Does anybody want to put a placeholder to think about in the future of whether we want to stay with that number or not? Of course, Dr. Kizner, I, I certainly agree, we may get additional expense items coming, but I always like to have kind of my tracking list of where was maybe an area the board might want to come back to.
I, I would like to personally recommend that we fix, that, I would like to recommend that we fix the service sector scale in one year instead of dragging it out. I think most of these employees are not on our highest paid scale anyway. The economy being what it is, I think I would like to see us in a more competitive place with our support staff, and I think it would, it, it seems financially feasible, given that it's only a $4 million add.
All right, so I'm going to put that on like our potential to, to come back, see how that would impact, is that, before we move off of the service scale, and Mr. Fulmer, I apologize this way, when we did the modifications to the bus driver scales, 2019, gosh, so long ago, how is that impacted in the budget? Is that continuing to be fully funded? And I'm sorry, just to make sure that I understand where that falls in this?
Yeah, it's definitely, obviously, still funded in there. We did that, it was actually, was not just the middle of last year that we implemented that, so November of like 2019, December 2019 is when we were really looking at that. And so that was already actually rolled into our 21 budget, because we had that information before we started building a 21 budget. And then there, so it's still included in this budget. And then they're considered service staff, so they're still looked at, they're less impacted because we already made a big adjustment to them, but if we still had some drivers that were off based on the calculations that we're showing, that they would be included in that as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I know that transportation is an area of some need, so just was putting it out there, if there is something, there's an incentive program, if, if that is something that is needed, I'm at least willing to sort of let staff and Barry and, and you all know best, but hearing that some of our challenges right now involve transportation, if we feel that we need to incentivize or, now, I know that's more probably in this year's budget, but just going forward, just something to think about, it was kind of leaving, so, just a thought. All right, I believe our next area, since we've talked sort of about the models, now let's talk about the people. Let's move on to the additional staff. I believe there's a slide on page, sorry, I did it from my other one.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Before we do that, I just want to ask a question about nutrition. Now with all the free meals that we're able to offer people, and I know we actually make a few cents on each meal that we provide, are we able to do anything, look at any increase for our nutrition staff, you know, from that extra funding that's coming in from the, you know, the extra meals that we're serving?
Yep, the nutrition staff are included in the same, they get the same analysis and comparison that we're doing for the service scale enhancements.
Okay, but aren't they pretty much self-funded?
They are.
In, in the nutrition program, so do, do we anticipate having a, dare say, surplus in the nutrition budget this year with the, I'm assuming that we're serving more meals now because of the extra breakfast that we're giving out to everyone, because we didn't always, you know, sell as many breakfasts as we did lunches, and now that we have people picking up meals and we're distributing more, are we realizing more
Yeah, so.
Income in, in the nutrition fund?
Yeah, good question. I was actually doing a mid-year update on Tuesday night at the, at the board meeting, and I was going to quickly touch on what the nutrition fund has been looking like this year. Long story short, is there
I can wait.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I didn't see the agenda yet.
Yeah, that's right. And you wouldn't know that the nutrition was on there anyway, so.
Are, are we getting any additional federal funding on the, for our nutrition program?
They, we're still receiving the federal funding per meal that we distribute, yes.
Now, if we were getting anything additional?
It's, it's not additional, because we're giving away more free meals, we're getting additional revenue, but we're actually seeing less sold, you know, we don't have kids in the schools buying meals, and they're not buying them when we're distributing them either, so, so our, our purchased meals are down, but our free meals that we're giving out in our federal money is up.
Ms. Young?
Ms. Hazard, I do want to recognize the people behind me. First of all, thanking them for coming today, but each one of them represent a lot of the staff that you see. So if you get into questions, don't hesitate to ask them, because they could get into much more detail. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Young?
Yeah, a quick question about petroleum, oil, gas. I know last year, we thought we were going to have a savings, and I think it was stipulated as a saving somewhere, I'm trying to find it, I'm going to figure, I'll pick your brain. The fact that we are driving several routes now, does that still appear to be a savings? I wouldn't think so, based on how many routes we have to run. So would that be adjusted?
So I don't, I don't know the exact number of what we have in for fuel in the FY22 budget, but you're, I think more speaking about where we stand in FY21. And so we do have fuel savings for the beginning of this year because of the reduced number of runs, but now, starting next week, not only are those runs coming back, but then they're increasing. But we have projected what that looks like when it comes to fuel, and we have enough funds in the account, it's not going to be a million dollars in savings, I think we normally budget about 1.2 million dollars in fuel for the year. So I think we'll have a couple hundred thousand dollars in savings there at the end of FY21, but it's not 5, 6, 700,000, because we're going to start to see some big increases in our fuel consumption coming up.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was taken into consideration, that that was not as big as a savings as it was
Right.
Before anticipated.
Yep.
Have we anticipated those fuel costs for next year as an increase? Because I would imagine we're still going to be doing this type of hybrid learning for another six months, maybe longer?
Yeah, and I, I don't recall the exact amount, I believe there's a slight increase, but it's not a significant increase.
All right, we ready to go to people on, it's page five of the, yeah, there it is, of our requested staff additions. Mr. Fulmer, and I, don't take this wrong, Dr. Kizner, are there some, some up there that you would like to focus our attention on first? Or, and you can certainly defer to Mr. Fulmer, but I know that these were some of the decisions you have to, had to make between what positions, because I know you were asked to fund, I think it was like about 200 positions, and you've whittled them down, but, so I was sort of going to give you first shot on focusing us on where you started.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was a significant challenge to prioritize. I do want to mention the first one, supervisor compliance, and to be honest with you, I had to talk Dr. Hummer into this. He's, he's, he's an amazing director of special and student services, and I say that because I had that position at one time. So I think I already brought this to your attention, you might have saw an article in the Fredericksburg paper, the state was audited by J-LOC, and that J-LOC audit indicated that the state, not Stafford, but the state as a whole, had many areas in special ed that were out of compliance. So the General Assembly, the Governor's Office, and the Department of Ed restructured how school systems are going to be evaluated for special ed compliance. And it's going back to a system really back in the 80s and early 90s, I actually recall, I, I know, when I look at that picture, I realize I have beautiful silver hair when they keep showing that, that owl, showing my age a little bit, but anyway. So every school system's going through a formal evaluation, once every five years, but we'll have ongoing evaluations. And what that means is outside group of people will come to Stafford and visit our schools and do an audit like the, I, I never had an IRS audit, but I picture it like an IRS audit, where they'll look at files, they'll go into student classrooms to make sure students' IAPs are actually observable, and then look at student progress. And Dr. Hummer and I attended a meeting with Dr. Lane and went over the process, and honestly, it's, it's a full-time responsibility. So that position is a, is a reaction to the state audit for, for J-LOC. And again, if George wants to say more, he should. The work-based learning coordinator, we've talked about this as a school division, to try to build relationships with businesses, private, public, not-for-profit, profit, and not dependent on someone having already a relationship in the community. So that is a reaction to that. And then the equity and outreach, again, this one is a lot of focus on working with the families of children who are English learners, as you already saw, that's, you know, one of our fastest-growing populations, 6% to 8%. Remember, every 1% is about 300 children, so we gained 600 children of, of English learners. And this is to make sure families, the language is not a barrier, that we have a liaison working with them. And the other ones, I'll just defer to people in this room that know more about it. The school council, I do want to make sure it's fully transparent, just to meet the state requirement, we only need two points something. But to commit to the objective of having counselors not itinerant, that they would be fully located in a building full-time, that's how we get to the eight. If you look at tier one, which we do have, if you want tier one, we, that was the number one request in that, in that field, counseling, psychologists, social workers, behavior specialists. And so eight is, is, is above the requirement, but the requirement, I think, is not, you know, not really hard to meet. So anyway, that, and George, if he wants to speak more about that.
Dr. Kizner, let me, let me pause on that, I was just going to say, let's, let's talk about that maybe first section, this special education, so let's see if there's questions on that, we'll kind of divide them. So I'll let Ms. Hollerbeck jump in, it sounded like that, and then I think we may have some questions, but if we keep jumping around, let's go there, if that's all right.
I, I think last year, we, on everything that we put into the budget book, it was either asterisked or bolded what was a legislative mandate, what are, what a need of the school division was and what a want of the school division was. Am I wrong in that, or did we just talk about maybe doing it? Because I think if we put that in our budget book, when the board of supervisors look at it, because they're going to say, is the state making you, you know, put kids, I mean, put teachers in those positions or licensed staff in those positions? I think if we put it out where they can see it, that it might eliminate some of that question.
They always seem to ask that question.
And just to go to Irene's point, when they presented it, and George, again, I'm going to ask him to come up, he did present it that way, what are state or federal requirements and what are best practices? Okay, so he leased in the area special ed and EL, and now with the state, with school counselors, most other positions, class size reduction, of course, is a state requirement, but, and we could get into that specific detail.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we did, I just want to make sure that, that it's, anything that we have written?
It's coming.
That it's on the website, that people can actually see, you know, what our requirements are.
On the budget summary that I provide to all, we usually denote that, and on the one I provide you today, it doesn't, except for the counselors, and so that's on me. I can all update that and include that, because the counselors, I broke out, making sure we knew which ones were compliant and which ones were to relieve the itinerant staff to make them full-time positions, so we weren't traveling between schools. But I didn't denote it on the other ones, but I will. Yep.
All right, Ms. Young, I know was jumping in, and then Dr. Kizner.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just going to piggyback off of what Ms. Hollerbeck was asking, not only did we do that, but we had which ones were standards of, which ones were SOQ also, which ones were required, and so that would be helpful, I would like to know from this whole, not just that breakout for special education, which ones are actually in the governors, you know, were any of them denoted as, that we have to have them? And so that will be helpful.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll denote, I'll denote those breakdowns, really, in this budget, the only change in the SOQ that's requiring us to add positions is the counselors, but we're also adding ESOL because of, to stay up to date with, because of our ESOL growth, so that's the other big area.
Yeah, that will be important, I would like to see that.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, and I, I have another comment, but just piggybacking on this comment, let's just make sure we have it right, because before Dr. Kizner was here, I remember there being a budget presentation where it wasn't quite right, or it was confused or whatever, and, and that was a very uncomfortable budget meeting because of that. And then I just wanted to say that And then I just wanted to say that, that a lot of these positions make a lot of sense to me, given what we are anticipating seeing in terms of learning loss. And I think that, you know, having additional 504 support, compliance, all of that, if we can take some of the load off of the teachers in the classroom, so they can really be concentrating on their teaching, rather than having to deal with this paperwork, I think our students will be better off for that. So I'm, I'm happy to see that.
And, and just give me permission to be a pain. So remember, the SOQs are the minimum stands of quality. Everybody forgets that word, minimum. So I think one of the reasons why our per pupil expenditure is so low, because we budget to the minimum. So, yeah, we could provide the board of supervisors, which we should, but we should not be shy to exceed the minimum. And, and you'll see, again, how many requests were given and then we, and I'm guilty as charged, we backed into the minimum in most cases to support the salary increases. But if we're really ever going to push the objective of meeting our students' needs beyond the minimum and also increase our per pupil expenditure, the SOQs are important, but the state is very clear, he's the minimum stands of quality. Everybody just goes to SOQs, but they forget the word minimum, which is the word that is prior to the standard.
Yeah, and, and I just was going to say that, that was sort of my reaction as well, is that I see that the, across the street, they see those things and then they're like, well, that's really all you need.
Okay, let me defend what, what I said. The reason why is because it will eliminate, the ones, when you put that, it eliminates those out of the want category, because they're, it's a have-to. That's, that's the only reason. And then what I wanted also to see is the fact that we're tying it in, I'm piggybacking off of what you said, Dr. Kizner, if we want excellence, we need to say in order to have excellence, this is the requested staff additions for excellence. So I would love to see that word popping out on, on whatever presentation that says, you know, investing in the future for excellence, then we need to tie it in, let's say, in order, because one of the things I don't want to see is that we start jerry-picking which ones and fighting about which ones we need to keep and, and which one stays and which one goes. This is what excellence is about. And what I don't want is like, oh yeah, special ed, we keep and equity and outreach, we don't, because you don't understand equity and outreach. You're going to, you know, pick on that. I want to make sure that, you know, this is what excellence looked like.
Dr., oh, go ahead.
I was just curious, could you explain, you've got four full-time ESOL, is that adequate? And what would those positions, where would those positions be?
Four ESOL positions.
So the 17 per thousand.
Turn your mic on, Dr. Kizner.
The current standards of quality, minimum standard of quality, I'm going to start using that word, minimum, is 17 staff members per 1,000 ESL, ESL children. I call it EL, so I gotta get used to ESOL. So anticipating our growth, we felt that we needed at least four to, for the, to keep to that standard, to that minimum.
Well, I'm just concerned that it's not enough, given the, especially since that group of learners has been so adversely impacted by COVID. I'm just wondering if, if we're making enough of an investment in our ESOL.
And I'm not going to disagree with you.
And you're saying that that number is getting us to the minimum again?
That four is anticipating the EL, ESL growth that would get us to the minimum.
Could I make a, a suggestion? One of the things that it seems like we're all talking about is, I'm going to, I'm going to do an example, and maybe these are the ones that we need to have in our budget kind of back pocket. I'm going to posit the, I'm not going to have the right numbers, but let's say we look at this, you know, to explain to our community as well as our funding body, why are we asking for these? Well, if we decide, if we went with the state minimum for counselors, that would mean we would have 32. I'm just making a number up. However, that would mean, because we have 17 elementary schools, eight middle school, that means that one counselor would have a caseload of 3,000 children. I don't know, maybe, I'm just, then saying, but of course, that means that there would not be a resident counselor in these buildings. And name them. Make it real. What does it mean? Right now, we have these five schools that do not have a dedicated, fill in the blank, counselor ESL, or they don't have two. Make it real and let's say schools by name, because then that makes sense to somebody of saying, wait a minute, my school doesn't have two. Does that make any sense of what I'm trying to say? And I don't, I may not be saying it the right way, but.
And I, and my, my daughter Rachel slept over last night. If you, if you follow me on Facebook, you saw pictures of my grandson and me. I'll send it to all of you, because he's, he's my, he's my best friend, is the only one I get to spend with, a man. You know, I spent all day with, and I, I'm really lucky. But my daughter, who teaches in Fairfax, is a great example. She's a fifth grade LT, LD teacher, just for fifth grade. Our teachers don't have a grade, so they go multiple grades, so they have to get to know multiple children, multiple families, and multiple teachers. That's a great example where Fairfax, along with a lot of other school systems, have gone way above the minimum. So we're meeting the requirements, but, and George has talked about this, and if you look at tier one, you'll see he, he, he gave us such a pathway to get to that, where a teacher would be assigned to, a special ed teacher would be assigned to a grade per school, and that's really what our kids deserve, our teachers deserve, and then our families deserve. So that's an example where we could highlight, go into your example.
Because as opposed to saying, going above the minimum, saying meeting need, the needs of kids, is, I really think the way that we have, we, we can't always say, a lot of people, when they go out to buy something, I was trying to think of something that was easy to, okay, I'll just be maybe gross, but when I go in and you can look at the million, if, if, if it's not a snow day, toilet paper there, you know? I'm telling you, I'm not going for the, you know, 50 cent one, just saying, just not going there. But, you know, because you want quality, you want those things. And it's not just because you could do something, let's, but I do think the more we can take it down into complete school impact and making it real of these five schools share a counselor. Because, you know, okay, you know, residents in that, do you want that for your school? Do you supervisor so-and-so want that for your schools? Because then that's real and it gets away from, oh, we have one person above the minimum. That's just not what the story is to me, but.
Can, yep. Can I get some information about this online learning coordinator positions? What, what exactly, the, the two online learning coordinators?
Okay, so this, this is the example where it's really not going to come out of a local budget. This is the CARES Act money. Okay, so the CARES Act money allows you to hire positions tied into your response to COVID-19, and we believe there's still going to be a, a virtual footprint next year, and that's how it would be supported that way.
Dr. Kizner, what happens to those positions when the CARES money runs out? That become, did we roll that in or did we eliminate it?
I think we have a conversation if it, if it, did it meet an objective that, did we actually improve our virtual learning and, and our staff and students seeing it valued, then next year, we make, well, it's the two, it's the 2023, so we will have it for at least two years.
Okay.
But at that point, we, we may come back to you and say, we need to consider funding it locally, or we're fortunate to have it for two years and we could say goodbye to it.
Got it, thanks.
Yeah.
I think we've looked at the, on the left-hand side, I think we've, has everybody asked their, their questions on the growth instructional support, special education, at least gotten some clarity there? All right, if so, let's move to the right-hand side. Let's talk about the equity and outreach and the support positions. Any questions there or further clarification?
I just want to, I just want to make a comment. The, I, I've asked for many years, I've been on Dr. Kizner for Equity Facilitator. I, I think this a very, very important position because, including the bilingual home liaison. We have an increase in, you know, Latin students, and I think in order to effectively and efficiently work with our community and see what the needs are, by not having one, I think we spend more money, because every school end up doing their own thing and, and using other staff to try to, you know, mitigate that gap. And I think it's very, very important to have somebody not only in the schools, but to work with the community, with the media, with HR, and, and with the schools. This is a very, very important, and as a matter of fact, Charlottesville has been commended for what they've done. As, as a matter of fact, that facilitator for Charlottesville, I forgot her name, has been in the paper a lot. And, and so I think that that's something that we need to strive towards.
Yes, I had, I, I'm just wanting to get a slightly better understanding of what this person would actually, what, what you envision they would actually be doing. And you and I have talked, and I share with the rest of the board, that it was just passed, and you sent me the, the announcement that for governor's school programs, there is now sort of a requirement that, that localities demonstrate that they are actually trying to provide access and outreach for, for all students. And every year, Stafford is, over the last few years, I keep hearing that we aren't actually getting to all the students to tell them, all the students who, who could qualify for IB or CGS, we're just not making the grade. And so now the state is coming down and saying, you will make the grade. I would commend Stafford for the fact that we actually look at the numbers on a regular basis, and we started looking at the numbers before the state required us to. But I know for me, I could see coming down the pike also, that we'd be asked to look at the numbers for other things, and one of them would be sports. So what does our golf team look like? What does our field hockey team look like? What does our lacrosse team look like? Does it look like the, the whole distribution of our, our county? And so I'm just wondering, would this person be involved with that? Or are we going to have to make an additional commitment in order to have, have what we need there?
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. So one thing that's very important is that we should give people permission in our divisions to say, I'm not really sure what equity is all about. I don't even know what it even looks like. Okay, so I remind us that when I asked Roxanna to oversee equity, I never took anything away from her. I said, but you'll still do accountability, okay? So if you like the TV show Chairs, Woody wanted, he didn't want a raise, he just wanted to be chief bartender, okay? So he ended up being chief bartender, and he's the only bartender there. So Roxanna became equity and accountability. So I'll give you a real example that's happening this month. This month is Black History Month, okay? So, and I applaud a lot of our buildings, they have individual programs and projects going on. But we don't have in our curriculum, this is not a one-month activity. So we need, so again, they say superintendents need to be around five to seven years to really make systemic change that's sustainable. And one of the things that I will just say, being here, you know, two and a half years now, I think we have a lot of moving, we have a lot of different people, their hands in different things, and we don't really, so Lod, and I'm not being critical of Lod, but we have somebody overseeing math and science and social studies and English, and they're all, you know, they're, they're working together, but sometimes they're not communicating on the equity forefront. So this person would be very much working at the building levels, working with the administrative level, Stan, Roxanne, myself, and Jan, their names all kind of rhyme a little bit. We actually have a meeting next week to start this conversation on how do we make sure our curriculum? And you guys have gotten a lot of emails of concerns over time, of some of our readings and writings are not, they're not relevant, and sometimes they're remarkably inaccurate. So this person, I do believe, will work with the governor's school, but I don't want to give you the impression that in next year or two years or three years, we may say we need additional supports if we're going to do equity the right way. But a lot of our staff, especially the principals, they are really trying to move that needle. But they would be the first ones to tell you, I need support on working with my staff so they could understand, I think we all understand, I think we all understand the definition, oh, but, but I don't know if we understand how it really looks in the classroom. So this position will, a year from now, we'll probably be able to answer it a lot better on what he or she actually prioritize. But we absolutely need somebody to be the, not the face of it, but the person people could call and say, you know, I want to create a professional development, a PLC, where my, where my English teachers and social studies teachers are working together to embed their writing prompts, and equity is going to be part of that conversation. So, but I absolutely, I, I shared with Dr. Chase that the General Assembly, the House side, and it's definitely going to pass on the Senate side, are looking at totally restructuring how governor's schools operate, and the, and the governor will sign it. And equity is the forefront of that, of that movement. And I don't, again, I, I mean, they, they seem very happy not to speak, but, but.
I'm happy to say something.
I mean, it's up to the chair, but I, I just don't feel like.
Sure, come on, come on, come up though towards, sorry, it does take you up there, because we want to be able to hear you.
Thank you and good morning to everybody. One of the things that I want to say about the equity position is that we have so many things that we want to do with it, that involves from the school level to central office level. But in order to really be able to inform the schools, inform our teachers, inform our families, to provide the supports that are needed, to get equity, to become part of, of our everyday lingo, to become so second nature, that we start embedding it and we start noticing it when it's not happening, in order to empower our teachers, our staff, in order to achieve that excellence that we're talking about, that we're striving, we need support. Believe me, I spent about half of my day talking to the principals and talking to staff about things that they're doing in their, in their schools and the support that they need. And I'm not going to stop that, but this is something that is growing, that is needed, and it, it's going to affect the curriculum, it's, it's going to affect everything that we do. So that's all I wanted to say of what, you know, on the family positions, it's part of it. We have family engagement in our, in our department, and that is huge, true family engagement of all students, everything from the students that are socially economically disadvantaged to the students that are, are, you know, are high flyers to everything. We need people that can help them, especially our ESL students, integrate into that community and make it home. So that's it.
Can I add something?
Sure.
So Roxanne, you could stay there for a minute. I'm, I'm gonna just go on a limb and also say that, Dr. Kizner, when you mentioned about, you know, bartender and being chief bartender, that's exactly, we have so many departments, and the departments are staffed. You have a department that is servicing 17 schools, and it's, like I said before, it's just not about minorities, it's just not about blacks and browns, it's about poor, it's about those that, that need assistance. It's not just about sports, and it's not just about governor's school, but I'm on a, on a gifted committee, and they're talking about raising their game because the governor had noticed that gifted, not everybody isn't gifted, that needs to be gifted. So we keep stressing, we're not taking anything away from anyone. We're providing to some that don't have. So the feeling that, you know, parents or communities or members of the board may have to feel like, oh, there's a group that's not going to get, everybody, everybody will be served through equity. That, that's what it's about. And so the mindset and the mind change need to happen, that equity helps. And so the mindset and the mind change need to happen, that equity helps everyone towards excellence in education.
Can I, can I ask a question? So I feel like when we're looking at these equity and outreach programs, and just something similar to what you were speaking about earlier, it just seems like it's trying, well, we're behind, but it seems like we're trying to get in front maybe of something that could eventually come down the pike, but also is a place where honestly, this could even become a growth issue, you know, for how our community grows, the needs of the community grow, this is something that would continue to grow to service all of our community. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, one thing I will tell you, Roxanne and I had a community meeting yesterday with people on this topic. We had a Zoom, a Google Chat meeting. So I say this with great pride, to be honest with you. So we're in many ways, because again, just because I've been, I've been around so long, and I'm very connected to what other people are doing, we are making some amazing changes and progress, we're probably not great in promoting it as well as we should, I will tell you that. Patrick did a presentation the other, last week or whatever, to the Equity Committee on his, on what we're doing in HR to make our school division more diverse in our hiring practices. Honestly, I don't want to even share it with others because they're going to hire him, okay? And what, what, no, I'm not, I'm just, you know, yeah, I mean, he arranged, him and Keena Butler arranged something with, an outreach with Virginia State, that's just going to be with Stafford. But my point is, that's just a small snippet of the things that we're doing. Family outreach Roxanne already talked about. But I have to be honest with you, we only got one person, and the only thing I would correct Pam, Ms. Young about, it's not 17, we got 33 sites. Yeah, 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 no, I want to include the little kids to the oldest. So we got only one person in our entire division that oversees family outreach. And so this is a beginning. Last year, you guys made a great decision, you said, let's just hire one 504 coordinator, come back with a plan, and that's, you know, that was that five position. It was your decision, because it was a great, yeah, it was your decision, it was a great decision. So anyway.
And Dr. Kizner did ask that we present at the next board meeting, all the efforts that we're doing, so that you see how it's meshing with everything in our system and how we're moving it forward. So thank you.
Mr. Fulmer, are you in charge of these slides? If you could put up that slide again, I'm sorry. You know you don't want me in charge of it. Thank you, yes. Thank you for giving us that. Support positions, I just wanted to look at that, we're gonna, when we finish our support positions, we're going to take a couple-minute break for everybody to get up, but let's finish our topic.
So is lead data engineer like chief bartender?
Yeah.
Do we have like other data engineers, or would this be like our first real data engineer?
Yeah, I love that word engineer, but I'll let Chris deal with that.
Well, if Jay was here, I'd defer to him.
I know, yeah, where is Jay?
I'm here.
I know it's listed, I thought it was, I thought it was listed.
Yeah, I'm available if.
Go ahead, Jay.
Okay, so we have a team of database administrators, it's, this lead data engineer aligns with our lead systems engineer, as far as salary goes, to sort of align what we do with data with what we do with servers and all the other systems that are out there. What we need this position for is to really up our game with how we're going to pull data together and present it, and just all the various pieces of data that affect the student's education, and how we can measure that performance. We need somebody that's going to really up our game across the board on that, and that's what this position is for.
So is this, would this also be connected to like the data dashboard kind of data, or is this?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Does security of our data have anything to do with this position?
Yes, ma'am. All of our engineering staff, whether it's in data or the server side, there, everybody is, a good chunk of their job is making sure things stay secure, and we protect student privacy at all times.
Are there any other questions about the support? I have one, but nobody else. Dr. Kizner, just, and, well, you and Mr. Fulmer, I am certainly hoping that we will be overfunded by our funding body. However, could any of the positions that Mr. Cook is discussing be covered with CARES Act money? Just as a thought. I mean, not, clearly it's one we're going to need in our base budget going forward, and I believe these are definitely necessary items, and I know that we have a lot of needs as well for our CARES Act. I just am throwing it out as it's sometimes nice to have, and wondering if any of them might be able to be in support of the, of course, increased virtual support, I know for our online law inquiry. I'm just throwing it out, it may not be, but just something to think about.
I can, I'll look into that because I want to review the, and we're calling it CARES Act because it's kind of an extension of that, it's technically not the CARES Act anymore, it's a different set of stimulus, federal stimulus money. But I do the same thing. So I'll look at the stimulus requirements of what it is. I, just looking at them, it's possible that the network technician, the repair, because that's in direct result of all the devices that we have out there now, that that may be something that would qualify for being under the stimulus.
And please, no, Mr. Cook, this is not because I don't want to fund it, it's because I want to fund it, and I'm just trying to make sure. So just maybe we could look at some of those, like I said, I'm like, I'm not saying not to keep them in there, but it might be nice to know if there is a possibility they could be covered.
And just so for the school board to know, these positions, the ones on the technology, have been in the past in tier one, they just never made it to the last tier. So these are not really new, new, they're just new to make it to the final, final cut.
And I would just, this is just a, something, a suggestion, I don't know if the board, if it will be the will of the board or not, but at some point, I would really like, and I don't know, not immediately, but a breakdown of all the stimulus money we have received and how it has been spent, because I haven't, don't feel like I've seen that. And it's not necessarily part of building this budget, but in terms of our responsibility of that, I would just like at some point to see the breakdown.
It'll, it'll be in the mid-year report on Tuesday. Maybe, if I had a director of finance, I could definitely have.
Oh, good answer.
I was just getting ready to make, I was just getting, I was just getting ready to make that comment about this finance director. We need to get that in here also, because I'm checking your inbox, Chris, just to make sure that you're not getting any requests for anywhere up north or south. So definitely, this is one that I want to get, this finance director, okay? And Patrick, you too, I'm watching your inbox, y'all don't play around. Stan, okay? Are you all here? I'm watching your inbox. That's what's up.
I'm taking me out of the.
You know, that's what I'm saying, so I'm watching all of y'all's mailbox up in here.
Can you repeat that after you turn your mic on?
Yeah, like I said, watching all's mailbox, yes, we're very fortunate, and yes, I love our staff, including Dr. Kizner, he's my man.
Also, maybe that maintenance worker, depending on how it's crafted, I mean, let's at least look, I'm not certainly, certainly saying, anyway, just, maybe we could just relook and just see if any of those positions might have some, even if it's a portion of them.
Sure.
Just to have in our back pocket.
I'm wondering too, if even some of the outreach with the family services and the bilingual outreach, since we are, certainly, I know, at least in, when I've, when I'm on the Head Start Policy Council meetings, staff is spending a lot more time reaching out to families directly, and it's a direct result of the COVID. So I don't know if these could be rewarded, that maybe even those positions couldn't be included, at least for the time being, because certainly I agree that they are permanent positions that we need.
Just to know. All right, any other personnel, are there any questions, and I'll go to Ms. Young, are there any things that, any services or comments that you have of something, you're saying, hey, is this still something that's being considered? Why was it cut? You know, if you have some questions about maybe what isn't on the list, is that okay, Dr. Kizner? Or would everybody like to take a five-minute break and come back and answer that question?
I just want to ask this one real quick.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Young.
I can't, I can't find my note, but it's 0.9 million for the tuition assistance?
Mic, turn your mic on. Yeah, so the total increase in non-compensation, so, was 950,000, that was not all tuition and loan forgiveness.
I was just referring to that tuition assistance, or whatever that package was, is that, is that year, is that yearly, or is that a one-time, or is it part of the budget yet, or did we?
It would be an annual, it would be an annual cost, and that's to kick it off, and as Patrick comes up, if you want to keep coming, Patrick.
Ms. Young, how about we do that part separate? Because that's kind of like a new program.
We can start that when we come back.
Are there any positions or questions of something you don't see there, or curious that it's not there?
I'm just only curious, again, thinking in terms of COVID, do we have, have we put in enough for what we're going to really, I mean, I know you've gone from tier one to tier six in the cutting of positions and stuff, and I just want to make sure, you know, that we're not SOQ-ing ourselves, and making sure that we have what we need, that we just ask for it. I mean, just full consideration of what we need to help our students, help our families, and even help our staff coming into another year.
So I would say that I probably cut more than I felt comfortable with. I tried to get to a number where I thought the school board could at least start having the conversation and not have to spend, not that I'm hearing you do that, but spend a lot of time justifying it. So our budget increase totally is a little less than last year, I do want to remind us that, it's a little bit more asking for the county. I will say that you guys will come back together again, because we'll find out new state revenue, and then of course, you're going to find out what the county's going to give you. So you're going to have at least one of, if not two other opportunities to adjust the budget. One thing we have been doing during the course of the year, especially in the area of substitutes, because we're heavily dependent on substitutes right now, which is a challenge for everyone, and transportation, to go to Ms. Hazard's comment earlier, we've had to come up with, you know, short-term incentives to get our drivers not to be absent, not non-COVID-related, okay? Because again, what, what the impact is, this will impact construction. So, so I guess I mentioned it, because sometimes it's nice not to have things totally committed, and having funding available so we could adjust as we go along, and transportation substitutes are two examples where we've had to put more money into it, and also to support our special ed paraprofessionals that honestly have been coming in every single day that we've been open, and not being paid, as Chris already shared with you, at the level they deserve. So we've adjusted to, in many ways, to acknowledge that they're coming in when many people are not coming in, based on the model. And so it was nice to be able to do it because we had the funding available, because we didn't lock it into certain positions.
Well, you knew where I was going, Dr. Kizner, because you knew I was going to ask about bus drivers. Everybody knows, I think we're going to grow, I think our next year opening number is going to be higher than 30,000, I'll just go with that, maybe we can have a pool of what we think it will be. But I think that our kindergarten class is going to be large, huge, maybe I'll border on that. Do we need to put growth for transportation? And I know that's a Barry question, but I can't not ask it because it's sort of my usual question.
Yeah, I think kindergarten, first grade is going to be interesting next year, because we had a lot of children did not enter kindergarten, but they'll be age of first grade. So what will that look like? And so the cohort movement is a little bit more challenging this year, Lionel has done a very effective job of anticipating it, but there's a lot of unknowns. I don't really know this, but some of you may know this better, but we have seen more families being relocated to Stafford recently. I think it's really very related to Quantico and the military at this point in year, and they've been reaching out to Lisa Boatright and myself sometimes, seeking information about our schools. So I do anticipate, they're not enrolled today, but they're seeking information. So I do think that we may see more children, especially if COVID numbers are much better, the vaccine improves greatly, that we will see. Because remember, last year, prior to COVID, we were over 30,000, that was our projection. And now with 29,700 for enrollment, 29,400. The state did a very good thing for every school system, they kept us harmless. So we don't really have to worry about ADM for next year. But ADM is not as important as enrollment. If you have two children and you drive, you know you have to have a car that can at least seat three. Even if you only drive by yourself, you don't want to say, well, we all can't go be in a car because I only have a car that sits one, that would be like a motorcycle, I guess. But, so, we're more worried about enrollment than ADM, because enrollment's what, that does to class sizes.
So, I mean, just for me, as a place, if there is something that Mr. Suddeth thinks needs to be, either if it's staff or incentive money towards bus driver, I'm just telling the board, I'm at least open to that, because we don't roll if we don't have the buses.
Well, not only that, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria staff, a lot of people have stepped
up, do additional duties in helping staff the internet cafes and other things. So it's just, we've been reliant on a lot of our support staff, that's one of the reasons I support bringing them to the midpoint at one fell swoop. I think it's just they really stepped up.
I just want to add, I've had a lot of conversations with Barry about this, and Patrick and I have worked with him on revisiting our attendance incentive and things like that to entice bus drivers. But as far as adding, adding drivers, I've talked to Barry a lot about that as well. We added, we did add some in last year's budget, I think it was five, because of anticipating growth. Right now, Barry thinks we're okay, and when it comes to drivers, our biggest issue is actually finding the drivers. So right now, ballpark number is 20 vacancies that we still have in bus drivers. So adding five more to that, which means we have 25 vacancies instead of 20, we can't fill the ones that we have, and so we're, so we're trying hard there.
On a positive note, we're doing training today, there's a Saturday training going on for new drivers, led by our drivers, so that's, that's a positive note.
Awesome. All right, everybody, let's take a few-minute break, and we'll be back in.
Do have a hard stop at 1:00. That was what we agreed to. So wanted to get us started on a couple of the other areas. And then what I thought I would do is then I would go through each board member if there's additional questions that you have from either your review of the budget book. But I didn't want to forget the area that Ms. Young gave us the teaser for about the investments in staff education, which is slide number six. So, Mr. Burnett, I'm sure, don't get too comfortable sitting, because I think you'll be coming forward for this one, or Mr. Fulmer, about the investments in staff education, the tuition assistance, and the education loan support. That, to me, is sort of one of the new items that were added, which I was really happy to see. I remember Dr. Kizner and I talking about this a little while ago. But just to kind of give us an overview of the thinking and how it works or where we're going.
Yeah, so Patrick's going to come up and kind of just give you a little bit more detail on what that plan entails and who it would incorporate.
Come on up.
I feel like we should have the Price is Right theme song when someone's coming in from the side. So I'm going to talk about these as two separate things, but of course, but they're related, and they're actually very intentionally related in the way that we structured them. So for a while, for a number of years, I'm not going to put a hard count on it, since I've only been here about two years. Stafford has offered tuition reimbursement to its staff. When I came on two years ago, the dollar thresholds were still fairly low for our service staff. You could get up to $400 a year. For our licensed staff or for staff who are pursuing licensure, you could get up to $1,200 a year. But there were some pretty good, pretty strong restrictions on that. You had to either be perfecting a provisional license or you had to be getting an endorsement in a high-need subject area. What we were able to do last year with the support of the board with additional funding is that we were able to broaden the criteria for that. So we were able to, first of all, raise the threshold, raise the floor, or sorry, raise the cap to up to $1,500 for all staff. And I know we talked about this back in the fall, and that number was intentional. It was about the average of a three-credit class at both Mason, Mary Wash, and then the most popular online programs that people participate in in this area. So that $1,500 didn't come out of nowhere. And then we also said, you know, the previous policy of having a higher threshold for people getting a certificate in a high-need subject area, that still makes sense. So we could say, we said you could get up to $2,500 annually if you were taking coursework that would lead to an endorsement in a high-need subject area. Now, that was meant to cover not just people who do not presently have a license and are pursuing licensure, but also our current licensed staff who are looking to add endorsements so that they would be eligible to teach courses in high-need subject areas. We also expanded that definition of high-need subject areas. Previously, we had limited it to endorsement areas that were listed on the state's critical shortage area list each year that they're required to publish under federal law. First of all, that list changes every year, which gets confusing for staff. Wait a minute, I qualified last year. What do you mean, I don't qualify this year? Because the subject might pop on and then pop off. The other is that that's at a statewide level, and what we care about is what we're seeing at the local level. So to give an example, I know that school counselors are a tremendous shortage area. Now, we have been very lucky, and great work by Georgia's department, that we have stayed staff with school counselors, but there's a tremendous shortage in that area. School psychologists, school social workers, same story. Well, those never show up on the state list of critical shortage areas. And so what we said is, we got to expand this out to recognize where our true shortage areas are, and that we're encouraging staff to pursue endorsements in those areas. So that was the change we made for this year, and we had additional funds in this year's budget to be able to account for that. I am happy to report that it has been tremendously successful in terms of the pickup that we have seen from staff. And with support from Dr. Kizner and Chris, we've actually been able to approve requests that have actually exceeded what the original budget area is, and we feel comfortable that we have the funds available to do that, so that we could honor the criteria that we had put out to staff. And what we're seeing is the exact kind of spread that we would have hoped to have seen in terms of the requests that are coming in. Paraprofessionals that are pursuing endorsement in areas, particularly our special education paraprofessionals that are looking to get special education endorsed, that is just a wonderful pipeline of special education teachers that we want to encourage. Teachers who are pursuing additional endorsement areas, whether it be in, oftentimes it's gifted that they're adding on, or in special education as well, that we like to see. We're also just seeing a lot of people taking courses related to professional growth, which I think is a wonderful expansion that we made. That's not just our service staff that are taking coursework, you know, whether it's bookkeepers or folks in finance that are taking additional coursework on finance. We're seeing teachers that are just taking additional coursework in their content area to be better at their jobs. And previously, that was not something that would have been approved for tuition reimbursement. Now it is. So the funding request that's related to the tuition reimbursement is just to adequately plan and budget for the use that we have seen so far this year. So it's not a change in the eligibility from this year, it's just making sure that we properly reflect in the budget what we anticipate the utilization to be.
Okay. Mr. Burnett, before you move to part two, let me see if there's questions about this program. Questions? Ms. Young.
So is the professional development, like say, for example, that multicultural relevance training, is this part of the tuition assistance or is that separate?
Separate.
Okay. And do you have a budget for that already? Or do you?
For the multicultural piece? I think that's running more through Roxanna's.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Burnett, I do have one. Dual enrollment, how does that play into this program? Because, well, I'll just ask it there before I make my comment.
That falls into that category of places that don't show up on a critical shortage area list, but we know we need. And so we work closely with learning and organizational development, because the process that we run is, everybody come in, you give us your application, you say what you're looking for. If you meet the eligibility, we're going to approve it for reimbursement. Once we get evidence you completed the course, we do wait until they actually show they pass the course before we cut the check. But for dual enrollment, because that is a very specific area, we operate that particular approval process differently. That runs through LAUD, not through human resources, because they're looking at the individuals who are applying, what credentials they already have, what specific things they need to be eligible to teach the dual enrollment courses, and does the course they've enrolled in align to what that need is. And so they are overseeing the approvals on that one, just because it is more of a competitive, I wouldn't say competitive, application process. There are much stricter criteria for what qualifies to be approved for tuition reimbursement in that case. We also have based, you know, we absolutely are hitting the gas on that because we know the need.
No, I appreciate that, because I think that dual enrollment is a wonderful way for our students to gain that credit and get some. So I hope, and it sounds like that is through LAUD, reaching out to our content areas and saying that this is available, because, you know, it isn't inexpensive to get those credits to qualify to teach dual enrollment. So just making sure that people know, hey, there is a pipeline to help you.
And we also know that we need those to happen faster. And so, you know, we work with folks to make it reflect what we need as a division.
All right. Anybody else on part one? All right. Part two, the newer program.
Right. So loan repayment, this is something that is not uncommon in the private sector. You typically see it at larger, either much larger corporations or very small entities, not the mid-sized ones. And it's really meant to just reflect the changing market of what it takes to secure higher education at this point. There was a report that came out from the Learning Policy Institute a few years ago that said that the average graduate of a teacher preparation program leaves with about $20,000 in student debt. That's pretty different from a generation ago, obviously, and the teacher salaries have increased. They have not quite increased to the level we would like to see, nor are they at a point where they're not quite as competitive as people who are leaving undergraduate with similar series of loan debt. This also gets to the idea that a employer bears some of the responsibility for the preparation of their workforce, but we're asking teachers to come in ready to take on that role. So there's, of course, learning on the job, but there's also that high level of expected competence as you're coming in on the job as well, that's reflected in the preparation program that you completed. So, and then the final factor is, if you are brand-new coming in, first-year teacher, you're pretty unlikely to be utilizing tuition reimbursement. I'm not saying that it doesn't happen at all, but you're more likely to be focusing on nailing down your first, your early career success. So this new benefit is also, sorry, I need to add one more factor in. We also recognize that even with the investments that Dr. Kizner has proposed to the board in our teacher salary scale to make our compensation competitive, there will will still be a gap from where we are to our competitor divisions. And that gap is narrower early in the career for folks, but it's still there. For the folks who are most cost sensitive, the people who are looking for that first job, who are most likely to have student loan debt, who are most likely to be thinking of, these are disproportionately first-generation college students, these are disproportionately students of color, that this is a way to target those populations as a way to close that gap for early career educators. So the goal here was to say for people in that situation, those first couple of years, first three years is the proposal, working for us, that they would be eligible for up to $1,500 in student loan repayment assistance. Again, that number is intentional. We wanted to make it identical to the tuition reimbursement eligibility, and it's an either-or proposition. You can't do both. So that way, there is a education assistance benefit available to all employees, but for this group of employees, there is an either-or option that they can pursue.
Any questions?
Do any of these, and I don't know whether it's possible to do this anyway or whether it's warranted or advisable, any sort of requirement that you would, you know, that if we've paid out for your student loan debt, that you're not going to leave before, you know, the year or before the two, you know, anything along those lines?
Yeah. It's, that's not specifically part of the proposal. I know that's something that the board has discussed in the past, both with regards to this as well as the tuition reimbursement eligibility. There are pros and cons to doing something like that. I'll say that most of the research that's out there says that unless the dollar amount is really high, that those types of restrictive covenants actually discourage participation in the programs, which, so you're cutting against your, so it's not a clear-cut case one way or another, but it's something certainly that we would continue to discuss.
Ms. Yan?
Okay. One of the other things that I remember Dr. Kizner had mentioned, just making the staff feel like, and I do this, and just in the community in general, I want the community to know that, you know, we're all in this together. And I think that that feeling of, you know, giving them that assurance and they are, because Dr. Kizner said, they're dedicated staff and that we could trust that they're going to remain here because they have a reason to stay here. And I think that is part of, you know, what we're striving for here altogether, that excellence, not only in education, but being trustworthy participants in this endeavor that we're all on here.
Yeah. If we could imagine that each one of us represented a school system and was a job fair, and you're a student graduated from George Mason or Mary Washington or JMU, and you come to Stafford and you see we have this, even if we may not meet the salary of Fairfax or Prince William, I think you're going to take a better look at us. So we do see this as a really, the right thing to do, but a really good recruiting tool also.
And if I could just make one other comment from a broad standpoint. When we recruit and we have our young teachers here and they have, they're moving to a new place, I don't know how, whether many of us know what the average rent in Stafford County is. It's not cheap. So to me, that is an additional way because we have not been able to get, well, I'll say, I guess I shouldn't say we, I'll say, there has not been broad support on the Board of Supervisors of an area of the comp plan that I believe is still in there about housing for county-type employees, teachers, first responders. It's been in there a long time because I've read it for a long time, but, so there isn't that alternative. And I know, or at least there was a time when we are allowing new teachers to, ways to communicate with each other, to find housing together, but it is not inexpensive to live in Stafford County and to rent. So I actually am very supportive of this and also exploring, I know, Patrick, you've done so many things, of how we can maybe even as a board to think about ways to maybe revive either that concept or just to get some traction thinking about it because getting young people here to teach and to live here, it's tough. I mean, so anyway, it's just a broad comment, but even when you come with debt and even just getting started, if a lot of your paycheck is going just to go and live here in Stafford, we can lose people because you can go and you can find an apartment, you know. So just something for us, I think it's a great additional tool.
I just want to compliment you for coming up with this as an alternative because it really doesn't cost us any more money. I mean, what you're saying is we can offer $1,500 to a teacher for taking a course or we can offer $1,500 to help reduce your debt. So from a school system perspective, it's not costing us any more dollars, but it's offering a significant value potentially to, you know, a young person who wants to retire that debt more than they may need to have some enhanced education. So I think that's a creative way to use the dollars that we have and to try to, you know, offer something that's going to help attract and retain. So thank you and Dr. Kizner as well for coming up with this. It's what we need to be doing and I think it's very fiscally responsible as well.
And I just wanted to add, agree with Ms. Healy, but also I had not thought until you mentioned it about the piece of first-generation college students and attracting a more, you know, a teaching force that looks like our student population. So I think that's great.
And if I can throw in just one other note in here, you'll see, if you go through the full budget book, you'll see that there's a line under Personnel Services that talks about having a vendor to operate this program. That's actually a pretty important aspect of doing this because what folks have shown is if you try to do this in-house, again, you see a downtick in participation because people get wonky about wanting to share that information directly with their employer. And also, you've got people with 5,000 loan servicers out there. So working with vendors that have done this with other companies, and I've talked informally with a number of them about how they operate this, it's a much easier process for the employer, it's a much easier process for the employee to be able to go through this. And then if something were to happen, if, you know, whether it's, whether the employee leaves or something happens, it's much easier to make sure you're controlling your expenses.
All right. Any other questions, comments on this one? All right. Thank you very much for the, for bringing this forward. I think there is a lot of support. Now, those were kind of the big chunks from the budget. However, I know individual board members have had the budget book or may have other broader questions that we haven't touched on. So I thought what we could do is we could go individually and bring forward maybe two questions and then we'll just kind of keep going around till we get through. But again, we are going to still do the hard stop at 1:00. All right? So who wants to volunteer to go first? I'm going to be nice. All right, Ms. Yan?
I just wanted to unscramble my brain on the superintendent's request summary. Tier one versus tier six. And usually in my mind, tier one is the best, but looking at this, tier six is the best?
So tier six is what ultimately became the superintendent's final presentation. So one is, was the first pass of the budget that all the departments submitted, and then we went through a process to make cuts and reductions to get to where the superintendent's budget was.
Okay. And so the final increase is nine, right? Page 22.
Nine.
Okay.
16.9.
Nine local.
Oh, and so that's the increase in the local transfer, yes. The total increase in the budget, I believe, is 16.9.
I think it was 10 something.
The total increase in the budget was 16.9, but since we have over $7 million in state revenue increases, the remaining $9 million is covered right now, assuming an increase in the local county transfer.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. So there's also in FY21's budget, we had $1 million in carryover from FY20, which was we knew building FY21's budget, we'd have at least $1 million left in FY20 that we could roll into FY21. We've left that flat for this year, so we are still leaving $1 million in there as a carryover from FY21 into FY22. It is not an unheard of practice. We, over the years, just depending on how the budget shakes out, we usually have some money in there. Like I said, this is the second consecutive year. The Board of Supervisors usually supports that, especially when we know we have years of savings, and their only requirement is that we identify one-time costs in that FY22 budget to use those funds on.
Okay. And then the only other question I had, I think this is a question that we get every year, you get this every year, this contingency and transfer.
Yep.
It is really in a negative, very, very high on.
So, yeah, so last year, because of the uncertainty with the state revenue, we built an extra $3 million into our contingency. So we left, our total increase in our state revenue in FY21 was over $17 million. We took $3 million of that and said, we're not going to identify where we're going to spend it yet because we're not 100% sure we're going to get all that money from the state, whether it was because of lost enrollment because of COVID or because of lost sales tax revenue from the state. We were concerned about spending it and then finding out that we weren't going to get all the state revenue. So we wanted to wait until we had a clearer revenue forecast from the state, which the governor came out with the no-loss funding, not only for our FY22 budget year, but also for FY21. So now we're certain to have that, but, so since we have that no-loss funding built in for FY22 from the state, we took that $3 million out and we've actually spent it in the budget. That's part of the increase in the expenditures. And then there is, yep, and we still have a $500,000 contingency set aside that's funded for if things pop up that we need to transfer out or fund a contingency into individual departments or object or expenditure accounts.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a huge number of questions, but one sort of more long-range planning question has to do with technology. So I don't know that the board has, has made a decision moving forward about wanting to be one-to-one in terms of devices, but that the previous budgeted plan was we were two-for-one. And so now we've gotten this big infusion of technology from all this stimulus money and we are now one-to-one. And I notice, I think, and, you know, looking at the budget book, I may or may, I just got it today, so I'm not sure I'm looking in the right place, but it looks like we have a 14% reduction in the purchase of computers for next year, presumably because we've just purchased all of these computers this year. But just something that maybe the board needs to think about is, you know, are we going to end up having computers be like buses, right? That you bought a whole bunch of buses one year and then all of a sudden you have a whole bunch of buses needing to be replaced in a particular year. So we could see ourselves having this huge computer expense in five or six years following this money. And so I just didn't know if you all thought about that or what kinds of, and I don't know what my fellow board members think in terms of, do we, I mean, it seems like some of our conversations with the Board of Supervisors, there's this assumption that, oh, it's going to be so great now, you might not need as much space because students are going to be more interested in being virtual. Well, that's only going to be possible if this investment continues, and I just don't know where we are with that.
So to Jay's credit, he's already looked ahead and how we're going to handle that. And so my job is, you know, to double-check those departments, right, when it comes to the budget. And so Jay can attest that when he submitted his budget and I first looked at it, I said, Jay, we just, we just bought, we're one-to-one. Why are you still spending X number of dollars on Chromebooks? And one, we still have some that are phasing out, right? So we bought Chromebooks this year to get one-to-one, but we still have some that are three, four, maybe five years old. So some of those are going to start to phase out and we have to replace. But Jay already has a multiple-year plan to make sure that three years from now, we're not hit with a $4 million bill to stay one-to-one as we start to rotate in, rotate out and rotate new devices back in. And there are some of the new devices that we're purchasing, we're actually using the stimulus money, and we'll provide that breakdown. To give you an idea, it's about, about $2.5 to $3 million in stimulus money that we're kind of funding on an ongoing basis for next year of not recurring things, those items that I talked about that were the air filters and some of that technology that we know we're going to have to replace.
All right. Ms. Randall, you start.
And I was just piggybacking and just wanting to clarify with you, you know, when she was talking about Chromebooks and then you go into schools and you see all these new filter systems as well as you're changing, and right now we're using stimulus money, but I just wanted to know, was there a, this opportunity to switch to our funds later because we have all these equipment pieces? And even cleaning supplies and, you know, medical and all of that, at some point, are we ready to consume that for ourselves?
Before Chris answers, I want to bring you back to the equity conversation just for a second. So in the past, you've heard this, a lot of PTO meetings and other meetings. A lot of the technology reductions are from building-based budgets. And one of the things that we heard loud and clear, you know, some PTO organizations were able to raise more than others and they benefited by having Chromebooks or other technology devices. So we actually see, actually, we see huge savings when we, when we fund it and purchase it by one person, Jay's department, and not having people go individually. So one of the things that the reductions came mainly out of the building-based budgets because we're purchasing either from the Stimulus Care Act or our own technology budget. And when you guys have another budget work session, I'll make sure Jay presents to you the technology plan that rolls out. I know you're talking about clean supplies and other things, but just didn't want to lose sight that there is a plan and we'll absolutely provide it to you.
And I'll just add to that, there's areas we're looking at not being fully reliant on air purifiers five years from now, you know. So like I said, it's roughly $500,000 a year just to replace all of the air filters and the air purifier. So if there's improvements we can do to HVAC where that's a better investment, where, you know, the bipolar ionization is one of the topics that comes up, and so we're close to having some estimates on what that will cost. And maybe we can use some of the stimulus money to make those actual improvements to our HVAC units and then have to, then in a few years, we can get away from the air purifiers.
Okay. Dr. Warner, go ahead.
Thank you. So I was noticing that the budgets for the individual schools, the principals' discretionary budgets have been cut quite a bit. Is it based on changes in their enrollment or is that you're offloading some of those purchases? Because I know last year, they spent a good deal of money putting together kits to send home with kids and getting workbooks and expenditures that they hadn't had to make in the previous years. So I was wondering if some of that is now being put in more of a central office so that it's one source? Is that why, or does it, is it changes in enrollment? Because I was kind of surprised to see the change in the school budgets.
Yeah. So if I understand the question correctly, so we are recognizing that we're purchasing more things centrally than we are at the individual department and school sites. We've got a formula that how we calculate how much funding each school gets, and it's based on enrollment. And so normally, it slowly increases every year. We just slightly reduced that number this year, so we're not seeing drastic increases on a school-by-school basis, or sorry, decreases on a school-by-school basis because we know that they can identify other valuable things to purchase. But understanding that they're not going to need to use their school site budgets to buy, let's say, $10,000 in Chromebooks as they work up to their one-to-two, one-to-one Chromebook initiative or technology initiative, that since we're purchasing so much of that centrally now, we more or less sucked up a little bit of those funds and put it into the central office technology budget.
So my understanding is that there-
we more or less sucked up a little bit of those funds and put it into the central office technology budget.
So my understanding is that there has been a lot of savings in terms of that a lot of, at least the high school budget, would go for things like officials or referees for sporting events, and that that is way down this year and was way down last year. So what happened with those funds? And is there enough money, after you've made this reduction, for when we go back to have that still funded?
Yeah, so as far as last year and then this year, it's somewhat the same answer, but I can speak with definitiveness for last year, because it's, we're done. So just like our regular operating budget, the schools had money left over, right? That rolls up right back up into our year-end carryover money, that 1 million of it went into FY21's budget, and the rest of it will come back to, goes into a reserve account at the county, and then we can request uses of that. So it's not like it, it's not spent, you know, frivolously just use-it-or-lose-it type atmosphere. We definitely, we definitely watch that, and then we pull it back in. It's all one big budget. When it comes, it's just how we break it up to the individual departments and schools. Does that answer your question, hopefully?
And just wanting to make sure that the reduction that we're seeing that Dr. Warner brought up, that it's not going to negatively affect being able to have those sporting events next year when hopefully things are back to what they're supposed to be.
Right, correct. It should be fine.
Before we move on, I had this, I was on that same page, which is the 104 of the budget book about the site base. So, Chris, to understand, so are you saying that the amount, like the elementary $111, the middle school $145, and high school $199, are you saying that those figures decreased from last year to take into account...
It is.
Okay. I didn't go and pull my old budget book, I have to admit.
Yeah, yeah, correct. And it's, and I, and hopefully it's in last year's budget book. I know when I looked at it this year, I asked them to add that in there to make sure that that breakdown was in there. It was really only a few dollars per student, per school, so it's not a huge amount, but it's... So they still have enough money. We feel like they have plenty enough money to do what they need to at a school site level.
So, but the decrease in the number, are you using the September ADM? Just for the board to know, I have asked Mr. Fulmer to provide, or, oh, Dr. Kizner to provide, from probably Lionel and his staff, a enrollment number as of January 31st for us, because that is the after-winter break, new families I know have joined many of our schools. Also, families transition in and out. So to give us sort of an idea of how we are trending in this year, I would like to do that number before we transition to the second semester, because sometimes second semester has some changes at the high school level because of students graduating a semester early, which is good. But I do think we need to do that. Because when I look at these figures and see some of these losses, and you all know this is coming, but I would like to note, as we talk, have had the high school discussion, if you look at that section for high schools on page 104, the increase has to be at Brookpoint of 15. So guess where we're, we are growing. We're not losing a lot. Mountain View increased four, and Stafford High School increased two. I am just trying to say, even with these, but are these based off of the September either ADM or enrollment?
Yeah, they would have been based on the September enrollment, but we do, once we get into the new year, so these are just budgeted numbers, we adjust their budget, you know, back to that $500,000 we have in funding contingency. If we have schools that increase enrollment based on the projections, we provide them additional allocation for those students.
Because I just see some of our schools that I know have some, maybe potentially what I would consider maybe higher-risk populations. I see some great losses, and that just gives me concern. I do understand that it is, there is something to be said that all schools get a certain number. However, this is a board member who might be willing to say, schools with certain percentages, certain criteria perhaps might be entitled to more. Just, and I'm not saying that this has to be changed as part of the budget, but that would be a discussion or a thought that at least occurred to me when I looked at these numbers. And like I said, I know they're not, this is an anomaly year for populations, but I just wanted to put that out as possible thoughts for some of our higher-risk schools. And Mr. Fulmer, it doesn't, it may not, this is just more for board thinking, but I would be interested, and it doesn't have to be today, your and Dr. Kizner's thoughts on that type of allotment.
And can I just, I'm, you know, I usually take last year's budget book and put it next to this year's budget book, but I don't have last year's with me. But, so you've changed school sites. Like, we used to have for each school a breakdown of how it was spending the money rather than just this solid. So can you talk to me about the decision to make that change and what it was?
Oh, so I'm going to, I'm 99% sure. I think the superintendent's budget's always at a summary level like this, and then by the time we do it for the school board-approved budget, it has the breakdown provided. But we can, if you want that detail now, we can provide it.
Well, I actually kind of wondered how accurate it was. It seemed like the schools might give you sort of suggestions of how they plan to spend the money, but that that might not actually be how they ended up spending it. So it's not clear to me that it was particularly useful, but not sure that it wasn't. I'm just kind of...
Yeah. So let me, I would say that you're going to see a lot of things that were put down on paper that did not come to fruition, and other things came. And in fairness to them, they're putting their budget together in October of '20 to try to predict, you know, July of '21 to June of '22. But another thing I will say, and Chris could speak to this if he wants, we think by pulling out the things that we're doing central office-wise, they're actually getting more money to do things at their building level. But I kind of feel comfortable saying this, and again, Chris, correct me. If a building really had a need that they can't meet in their budget, we support them. You know, we're not going to hold somebody back and say, "You overspent." But one thing I will say, some, a lot of this is the principals' management of that money. Some of them, first two months, they're pretty much spent 80%. Some come May or June, we say, "You have 80% left." You know, what's the story here? So it's not as clear that each of the 33 sites, using Phoenix and the two early childhood centers, are all doing it the same way. Yeah, yeah.
And I do like that, the uniqueness. It just was something that jumped out at me, looking at some of the losses on here. And like I said, it's not a, Chris, it's just a comment that I would at least be open to consider. So.
Ms. Hollerback, I believe you're next for any questions. No? Ms. Healy?
I'm also looking at this school site budget summary here. Is there a reason why the elementary went down so much? Is that based on the population? I mean, that minus 178?
Yeah, so it's a combination of what we were just talking about, about the reduction in the school site allocation on a per-student basis, and then also because elementary is where we saw the biggest drop in enrollment. And like I was saying, it's based on that current enrollment, but as they get additional students next year, we actually provide them the additional funds to support those increase in students.
And this looks like this is based on the percentage of students as of September 2nd, 2020? Is that what these numbers are based on?
Yes.
I'm just curious as to why we're basing this calculation on the actual, and we're making our funding based on the, you know, what we had last year?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's what we're being funded on. So if we're being funded on last year's average, but are we penalizing the schools, particularly the elementary schools, because their numbers went down, and of course, September 2nd, we never use that number anyway. It's always the 30th, isn't it?
Yeah, and some of that's just timing of when we're trying to prep a budget, you know, months in advance, and to Dr. Kizner's point, you know, a year and a half in advance. So we just, I think September 2nd, it was probably a Monday, or so it was the first maybe day of the school year or the first Monday, which we start that, took that number, which is probably actually a little bit higher than what it ended up being on September 30th. And because of our fall enrollment numbers, once we do the adjustments, they go down on September 30th. So we recalculate that number at the end of this year, and then as we get into next year, once the actual students show up, and then if it increases, we provide them money out of our funding contingency.
What we wanted to avoid was somebody say, "How did you come up with these numbers? Like, where are the, where could we check your data?" So September 30th of '20 is a document that we have to submit to DOE, but then we will adjust again come next school year. And the kindergarten and first grade was our biggest drop. So we know that elementary numbers are going to go up, but I can't tell you right now what that number will be on September 30th. I should, well, I could probably do it end of August, but definitely by September 30th, let you know.
But where does the money come from if it's not in this budget?
So when we adjust them, as we get into the new year and we adjust them based on their actual numbers, we take it out of our funded contingency, out of that $500,000 that we set aside for unknown or sometimes known increases.
Just wanted to know where it was coming from.
Yeah.
Well, again, for planning purposes, I would think that we would want to use a number that we're more comfortable with as being accurate rather than the first day of school. And if it's September 30th, which we already have and we're reporting, it just seems like that would be a more accurate number to base on. And when I, I mean, I'm just concerned about these drops in the elementary, because then I go back and I look at the position summary, and we're projecting hiring 18 additional teachers. And I'm wondering how many of those are going to go for kindergarten and first grade, because we've all had this discussion, and assuming that we are moving forward, you know, post-COVID, I expect we will have a lot more kindergarten and first graders in school. So how are we going to, you know, find, have teachers for them? Or how many of that 18, let me back up, how many of that 18 teachers are projected for elementary schools? The new teachers, the new hires on the position summary page?
Yeah, not many. So...
Could you, if you don't have it today, that's fine, but I would like to get that number
Yeah.
at some point, because I'm afraid we're going to come back here in July and say, "Oh, my gosh, we've got all these kids registering for elementary and kindergarten and first grade, and so we need X number of new teachers." And where, you know, where's that going to come from? I want to be prepared if we can reasonably expect to have that surge, which would not surprise me at all because of all the families that have, you know, chosen not to send their children into kindergarten this year.
We'll get you that. We also want to be prepared for another comment that you may hear. You have 70-plus vacancies, and now you're asking for new positions. Help us understand that. So we believe that the growth positions would come out of the positions that we already have in our budget that are tied to the vacancies. So we feel pretty comfortable that, and confident that we're going to be able to address growth at any level. But honestly, you know, I forget the number, 70, whatever the vacancies are, that it would come out of those positions, because those vacancies, many of them have been on your list for years. They're just rolling over each year to the next. So we feel like we have enough personnel to meet anticipated growth. But I do think, you know, we could give you more detail at a future meeting to address your concerns.
And that's a good point about the vacancies. If they're vacant, I'm assuming that we are filling them with subs or making some kind of arrangements to meet those needs, because if we have vacancies, we aren't filling them. Do we really need them? That's, I don't, that's a rhetorical question at this point, but I think it's a reasonable question. I would not, not add positions that are needed just because we have vacancies and have had a challenge to fill them. I think there are two different categories. And if we're not filling positions, and we haven't filled positions for years, then I would ask the question, why, you know, why do we need them then? But that's, again, that's a rhetorical question, but I do want to be prepared for a increase in elementary schools. I mean, I see this decrease here, and that, I think that's just a blip. That is a, you know, one-year blip. And if we're basing our budget on this, and then we have, you know, a significant increase, then that just blows the budget away. And then where are we going to find the money to deal with that? So you don't have to answer that now, but...
It's rhetorical, I know.
For planning purposes, I want to cover the whole picture.
Like I gave you the handout last week, month, I knew you were going to ask that. Because every, every budget you bring up...
I just looked at the book. I just got it.
Every budget you bring up, do we have enough growth positions? So I'm glad you did, because I would have been disappointed myself.
If I can, if I can add, because Dr. Kizner and I talked about this on several different occasions, part of the reason we don't have as many growth positions in there is because we anticipated, when we built the FY21 budget, we added 50 teachers then. Not all of them were just general growth. We had some special ed teachers and some other things in there, but roughly 50 teachers in the FY21 budget, but ultimately, because of COVID, we lost 700 students. So we're thinking we're getting those back. We budgeted in FY21, thinking we were going to have 30,000 kids that we would need teachers for. So we're getting kids back, but it's getting us back up to the level that we were, thought we were going to be at this year. So that's the big reasoning by not, that we don't have a ton of growth positions in there is we think it's, we're already staffed appropriately for the new kids that we're going to see next year.
So to follow up on Ms. Healy's question then, some of the 76 vacancies are growth positions that we built into the budget just in anticipation that we thought our enrollment was going to be higher.
Right.
And some of them are positions that we just are having a hard time filling. And, but I'm guessing there's probably not a lot of superfluous positions there that we don't, aren't ever going to fill. Correct?
Yes. I don't know. I didn't catch all of that, so I apologize.
But, so, so some of the positions that we haven't filled, that 76 positions, were growth positions that we expected larger enrollment.
Right.
But then COVID happened, and our entire school year was altered.
Correct.
Some of them are positions that we're having a hard time filling, people that we can't hire. And, but I would imagine there are not in that 76 positions, positions that we actually don't need.
That's correct. Yes. Mike.
Middle school math is a good example. We've been talking about, we've seen a huge increase of geometry at the eighth-grade level, because we have more children taking algebra at the seventh-grade level. But that's a very difficult credential to get people, and we would actually have, this is an example where I would support smaller class sizes. I'm not, I have my own beliefs about class sizes, but that's not important. But for the more advanced math, I do think a smaller class size has advantage, especially if we want to bring children in that traditionally don't feel like they're math-ready. We could help them be math-ready and exceed that. So, but that's an example, because we were just looking at algebra and geometry, seventh and eighth grade. And we, and the question that I asked the middle school folks was, yeah, if we could have more teachers, we would have smaller class sizes and probably bring in some kids that often did not see themselves in algebra and geometry until they got to the high school level.
Madam Chair, just a comment. Ms. Healy, I sidebar that question that you asked earlier, just so you know. So we were on the same page there. I just wanted to make sure I understood what Dr. Warner asked, and that my question, backup question with that is, I want to make sure that the equity positions that we talked about earlier, they are not in the growth positions. These are positions that do not exist and that are needed and cannot be replicated at this point in time. They're outstanding. Correct? Okay.
All right. Any other, excuse me, any other questions? All right. I know most of us have just been able to pour over the book, so there are going to probably be additional questions. Once, again, since we're all sitting here, is there a thought that there, that anybody would like to have a meeting before the, let's see, the work session on the 23rd? I'm sorry, I have to look at my... That was sort of my question. Do we want to put a placeholder on everyone's calendars for the 16th?
Is that the day after the holiday? Is that the day after the holiday weekend?
Yeah, but to send the questions in, if you have questions, send them in so that they could hear the answers and we could have a more effective, efficient meeting.
So.
Yeah, I'm in favor of putting a placeholder in for the 16th. That was what, that was what the 16th, that would be right in between. So we might, because then depending on all that gets done, that budget meeting or the one on the 23rd can be maybe minimal to make slight adjustments as opposed to if we made some shift at that meeting that might change things. Because I believe we would like to be approving that evening. So time?
Ms. Hazard, if you're setting a placeholder, I would suggest that we have an agenda with specific issues that need to be addressed. Because I don't want to meet just to say we met.
Okay.
If there is a need for it, then, you know, I'm certainly willing to meet, but I don't want to just meet so we can say we met every week this month.
Correct. The reason I would call it a placeholder, because technically we don't vote, but if there are enough questions that sort of come in, I believe that we will be having it. What time would you, can we say 6 o'clock? 16? Because then that allows sort of questions to be done so that when we get to the 23rd, we may have something really in the final, because I have a few questions that are not needed for right now. But really, the more that you can send in information requests early, it does help, I know staff respond with backup information. So anyway, any other concerns? Hearing, 6 o'clock?
Now, is that a definite meeting or is that a placeholder if there's questions or a need for it? I just want to know whether I need to put it in.
I would put it on your calendar as a needed meeting. If there are no questions sent in, we'll cancel it. But it did seem like people had just had some time to begin to digest their book and I want to make sure that everybody feels confident because on the 23rd, if we want to approve a budget that night and there's major shifts, also, will the Finance and Budget Committee have already met by then? Are they meeting? Okay, I couldn't remember, sorry, I was trying to keep up. Okay, so. That's my thinking. Right, right. So let's, on the 16th, get through our things so that if there's things that we want to add or subtract, we can really be giving that to staff early so that on the 23rd, we have a much more streamlined discussion. I believe it will be here. This is our new home, so. All right, everybody have a wonderful.